Yeah, I just checked and we're at six thirty one, so we will. We will begin and I will open up the meeting of the City of Sandy Planning Commission. On this Monday, March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one. At six thirty one. And just for the record, this meeting is being conducted via electronically via Zoom. Video conferencing. We'll give instructions as it comes time for public testimony as to how how the public can participate tonight. So we'll begin next with a roll call.
Hey, Commissioner Carlton.
Present.
Commissioner Losowski.
Here.
Plain Wenzel.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Hook.
Here.
Commissioner Mayton.
Present.
And Chairman Crosby.
Here, we got a full class. Thank you, everyone, for for being here tonight. Number three on our agenda is to introduce our our newest planning commission member, Jan. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, I'm glad to join you all.
It will be fun.
Yes.
Welcome, Jan.
Thank you.
Welcome again, Jan.
Thank you all.
Nice to have you here.
All right, and with that, I'm going to turn the the screen and the mic over to Chris for some little training for us here. We appreciate you being here.
If you chair Crosby, members of the Planning Commission, I am Chris Crane with the City Attorney's Office. Kelly asked me to come back and I did a general overview, land use overview training for the city council a few weeks ago. Because they have some new members, some of whom are not particularly familiar with the planning process and and Kelly thought it was a good idea for them to hear the training and for everyone to get the overview. After which he asked me if I could come back and do sort of a more, a higher level, advanced training for this group. And so that's what I put together, trying to get into some of the more specifics, instead of just explaining to you what the planning goals are and what your comprehensive plan is, you already know those things, so getting more into the weeds and some of the statutory obligations, the specific language of the statutes and some of the constitutional considerations and other things that come up in your sort of, I was going to say day to day lives, planning commissions, but it's night to night, week to week, because you have day jobs. So with that background, oh, and the other thing is, if you have any questions, again, I'm going to get into the weeds on some of this stuff. Just please, however you raise one's hand in a Zoom meeting, go ahead and do that, or just call out, and if the chairman doesn't recognize you, just yell louder. Okay. The other thing I wanted to do that I don't usually do is I threw together a presentation late in the day that Kelly will bring up here. I often describe cities statutory obligations or what a planning commission, the statutes require a planning commission to do, but I never go to the level of actually showing the statutes, and I want folks to understand. I'm not making this up. We don't make this up. I want you to see the actual language of the statutes. Land use is very much the land of magical language and much of that language comes from the statute, so this will give you a chance to see the origins of some of these terms that we throw around. A real quick review, Kelly, go ahead and jump to the first slide. What we do ninety nine percent, well, you know, ninety percent of the time is quasi judicial decisions, not legislative decisions. So I'm going to focus on that. And quasi judicial decisions are what we call criteria based decisions or criteria based decision making. And I had, I can't repeat it often enough for planning commissions, city councils around the state, your decision in a quasi judicial context has to be made based on the standards and criteria set forth in the development ordinance, and that comes directly out of RS two twenty seven point one seventy three. And ORS, by the way, ORS two twenty seven applies to cities, ORS two fifteen applies to counties, so this statute is specific to cities. Approval or denial of a permit application, permit is also a defined word, but I didn't bring that up, it doesn't matter for quasi judicial purposes, it's a land use application for a development project. The decision of, and that has to be based on the standards and criteria that is set forth in the ordinance. You are hearing more and more these days about clear and objective criteria, because there's that other statute reference there in subsection two. Or S one ninety seven point three oh seven specifically requires the city to have standards and criteria for reviewing a residential development application. And those criteria have to be clear and objective, and this says they must be clear and objective on the face of the ordinance, in other words, not dependent upon anyone's interpretation. So when it, if the statute requires the city to have clear and objective criterias, those have to be clear and objective on the face of the ordinance. And then finally, the third subsection there says, when you approve or deny an application or an expedited land division, we'll get into that, that's just a subset of a development application, a permit application. Your decision has to be based upon and accompanied by a statement that explains the criterion standard that you relied on and the facts that you, the facts that you identified in the record when making your decision. This is the specific requirement for findings. So your decision has to include written findings that identify the criteria you value, you applied, and the evidence you relied on in making your decision. So right there in three subsections is the core of the quasi judicial process. The overriding consideration when making these decisions is called quasi judicial for reason, you're acting as a judge. The judge does not get to make up the law. When you go into Circuit Court or into the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court, they're not making up the law. The statutes are already written, and the question is, how do they get applied? And you don't get to go out and and dig up your own evidence, you don't do your own site visits or go interview the witnesses or review the dead body in the coroner's office, all of that evidence is brought to the courtroom and presented to the judge. And that's what happens in this context, and when that evidence is presented to you by one side and then the other side, and they argue back and forth about what the law requires and what the evidence shows. At the end of the day, you have to be an impartial judge, you're not biased one way or the other, you don't like the defense or the prosecution. You have to make an impartial decision based on the criteria and the code and the evidence in the record. So that's why the requirement for disclosing any bias, ex parte communications or conflict of interest is so important. Kelly, go ahead and jump to the next slide. This is where they, that the statutes get into ex parte and bias. Conflict of interest is handled elsewhere, but I wanted to show you this because the principle of an unbiased tribunal, an unbiased decision maker is at the center of this process, but there are easy ways to get insurance against mistakes. If you happen to talk to someone who's involved outside of the courtroom or outside of the hearing room, that's a communication with the judge that's not in the record, and everybody needs to know about it, but it's so easy to fix. In this statute, it says, a decision of a planning commission shall not be invalid due to ex parte contacts if the member of the decision making body of planning commission, a historic review board, an architectural design board, whatever it is. If the member of the decision making body receiving the contact places the record of the substance. Sorry, my screen is blocking the text, let me get this out of the way here. Oh, you place on the record the substance of the ex parte communication at the next hearing. All you have to do is declare the substance, oh gosh, I got an email from so and so, I received a text, I got an instant message. I read an article in the paper, I heard something, whatever it was, all you have to do is place the substance of the communication on the record and let give people a chance to respond to it, and after that, no decision of the planning commission shall be invalid, so it's cheapest insurance on the on the books. So this is, it's kind of a no harm, no foul, if you get an ex parte communication and you disclose it, no harm, no foul. Couple of things to keep in mind, communication with staff, by the way, are not, is not considered ex parte. You're, the city is the decision maker here, and both planning commission and city staff are part of the city. So communicating with yourself is not ex parte communication, so you can talk to staff all you want in the middle of proceeding, outside of the hearing room, whenever. Same thing with the city attorney. But back to a principle of unbiased decision maker, an error in ex parte communications can be easily corrected. Bias, not so much. If you're biased and you cannot be an impartial judge, if you can't listen to the evidence and evaluate it dispassionately and apply the standards in your code dispassionately, just step down, just recuse yourself. Luba will send a decision back for demonstrated bias so fast and then you just get to do it all over again. The local hearings, make a new decision, all that witness testimony without the planning commissioner who was biased. So, you know, but I will say that the threshold for showing bias is very, very high. Luba has recognized that planning commissioners are members of the community too, and I think I, it was explained to the planning commission, my favorite case on this is out of Friends of Jacksonville Church versus City of Jacksonville that church was applying to put an addition on the back of the church, and one of the planning commissioners was a member of the church, and somebody said, well, you're biased. And the planning commissioner said, yes, I'm a member of the church, but I can set that aside and make an impartial decision based on the evidence before me. And Luba said, that's good enough. All you have to do is recognize the uncomfortable position you're being and that you're in, and declare that you can be impartial. And if you say that absent some smoking gun somewhere, Luba will take you at your word. So bias is usually not a problem because most planning commissioners, city councils that I've ever had to work with are pretty honest, and if they think they can't be impartial, they'll tell you. So I would encourage you to do the same. The last is conflict of interest, and there are two kinds, you probably may know. Yeah, you may know this already through some training with the League of Oregon Cities or someone, but there are two kinds of conflict of interest, one is potential, the other is actual. And the question is whether you or a family member or your business or some, maybe a business you're principal in will either, the phrase that the statute uses, suffer a pecuniary detriment or enjoy a pecuniary benefit. You're either going to lose money or make money from your decision. If that's actually going to happen, you have an actual conflict of interest and you cannot participate. If you are a principal in the business that is also the applicant, that's an actual conflict of interest. If you own the property, that's an actual conflict of interest. A potential conflict of interest is where you might benefit or suffer a detriment. And the best example I can come up with for planning commissioners is you're, you know, looking at a residential subdivision and you happen to be a Realtor. Well, an approved subdivision is going to affect the real estate market in your community, and as a Realtor, that might have some effect on you, but it's so speculative that unless you've already been hired as the Realtor for that developer, for that applicant, all you have is a potential conflict, declare it, get it out on the record, and then you can participate. If you have an actual conflict mistress, you cannot participate. A potential, you can, all you have to do is disclose it, much like ex parte communications. Kelly, was there anything you wanted me to touch on specifically on that subject?
Okay, I think you covered it. I think if any of the commissioners have anything they want to ask on that subject.
Social media is the big problem these days. You know, you guys are probably, any kind of controversial project, you are probably getting bombarded with social media. That if it's possible, given the the social, the platform you're working with, if you get a message and you can forward it to staff, they'll put it in the record, and once something is in the record, it's no longer ex parte. Ex parte is just communication that occurs outside of the record. So once, if you get an email and you send it to Kelly or Emily and they print it out and put it in the file, then it's in the record, you don't even have to worry about disclosing it. Anyone who wants to go through the record can see it. So that's the easiest way to handle social media. Again, if it's a platform that's, that you can do that easily. Commissioner May.
Hi, sorry, I just have, this is probably more of a, just a public question, I think I already know the answer, but I just wanted to hear it. And it would give the public the information too. So you mentioned social media. As a planning commissioner, I don't make comment myself personally on anything that I see that involves social media for fear that it might be get me entrapped in a conversation about that subject property. But as a citizen, I also feel obligated sometimes, like I want to comment on some social media action to, you know, whether it's whether I'm for or against it. Can you speak just for general information for us about the difference between our civic volunteerism as a planning commissioner and ourselves as a citizen here?
Oh, yeah, I'll do this sort of two ways, explain the narrow definition of what is ex parte and then everything else that's not. So ex parte means in the matter before you. So in order for a communication to be in ex parte contact, it has to be on something that is pending before the planning commission. So if there are town halls going on, if there's word that development might be springing up, if somebody's talking about rezoning a certain area, there are often planning discussions going on in the community that are not yet planning before, pending, sorry, pending before the planning commission and may never be. There are no rules that prohibit you from engaging in those discussions, and in fact, as member of the planning commission, you probably should. Right? So anything going on out in the community is fair game unless it's on your agenda or is you expect it to be on your agenda. So for example, once an application is filed, if it's the kind of application that will come before the planning commission, then any communication you get is ex parte, once the application is filed. But before an application is filed, it's not pending before you, and so no communications are considered ex parte. One other down in the weeds thing, you'll notice under three A there, you have to place in the record the substance of any written or oral ex parte communication. Luba has ruled that if you get an email or a communication or phone call or something, and you don't respond, in order for something to be a communication, it has to be two way. So emails or communications that you receive but don't respond to are not considered ex parte. I still encourage you to place them in the record so that everybody knows what information you're getting. But strictly speaking, if you don't respond, it doesn't fall, it doesn't fall within the definition of an ex parte communication under this statute. Does that help?
Very much so, thank you, very clear in your, with your instructions, I appreciate it, thank you.
If you, if you want, I can kind of play who's next here. Chairman Crosby was next, and then Commissioner Hook and then Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Thank you, Chris. I just had an observation and then a question for you. One thing for all of us commissioners, I think, keep in mind is that conflict of interest relates to financial gain, and I believe it's often confused with bias, even even the example you gave of the church addition and the the commissioner belonging to that church. I think that the general feeling of not, not our planning commission, but the public would say, oh, you you have a conflict of interest. When, in fact, as I understand it, that's not a conflict of interest, it's a bias. That if there's no money that's, that is to be exchanged, that's what a conflict of interest is, it's a often misunderstood term. The, the question I had goes back to the beginning, when you talked about clear and objective standards. And would you say that if a standard is clear and objective, that it is unarguable?
Pretty nearly, I mean, it has to be, it's, it's not a beyond all reasonable doubt standard. But it has to be fairly clear on its face that what the, what the standard requires. So setbacks, height limits, those are fairly obvious. But Luba is fairly generous and that Luba has upheld some standards as clear and objective that I thought could be argued as, as somewhat ambiguous. But the farther you get from that unarguable threshold, the more, the closer you get to not clear and objective. So there's, it's not a, there's not a bright line test that I'm aware of. But it's, it's not a gray area, really, it's not really a spectrum. So unarguable is one way to describe it, there are probably others. But, yeah, it needs to be fairly clear and objective on the face of the statute or your code provision.
Thank you, that's all I had.
And thank you for that clarification on the distinction between bias and conflict of interest. Conflict of interest means you'll get something of value. Somebody will give you a car, they'll throw you some business, you will gain financially in some fashion, that's a conflict of interest. Bias is just you're biased one way or the other. I'm sorry, who's next?
Hello. A question for you regarding the ex parte communication. You had mentioned that with staff, it's not considered ex parte contact, but what about with members of the city council? For instance, we have a hearing on something and it has the potential of being appealed by the, the city council or something has come to us and we'll be going to them for approval after we've heard it. What is our obligations regarding that?
So there, there are no statutes that go, it's, it's not considered ex parte, I'll just say that. But it, the problem with those kinds of communications is they can tend to suggest bias, either by the planning commissioner or the city councillor. If the communication looks like to the outside observer that you were lobbying the city councillor, and remember, if you're required to vote, you're going to vote one way or the other, and then it's going to, it may, depending on the communication and how it comes out and so on. That you're lobbying a member of the city council. Okay, sorry. Similarly, a city councillor, it may appear that they are soliciting information from you outside of the record, so there's not a law that prohibits it, but I encourage people for the sake of maintaining the transparency of the process and the integrity of the process to try to limit the amount of communication between a planning commission and a city council on amending on a matter that will come before both. It's a more of a best practices thing, if you will.
Next is Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Yeah, hi, let's see, am I on? Okay. Hi, Chris, could you speak a little bit to, it's, of course, with COVID, we haven't been getting together anyway. But in terms of whether two of us can get together, three of us, how does that work in terms of meeting outside of the planning commission?
Yes, thank you, that's really goes to the question of public meetings. And a, as you know, a majority of a quorum cannot meet for the purposes of deliberating on a matter that's pending before you. And the, one of the leading cases comes out of City of Springfield in South Valley that the Springfield City School Board used to get together after school board meetings at a local diner and sit around the table and just talk shop, right? And they were, they were sued for a public meetings law violation because it was a majority of a quorum, and they were talking about school business, school district business. The court said, yes, but there's a difference between talking shop and deliberating. You can meet in a majority of a quorum for the purposes of social gatherings, certainly. A majority of a quorum can even meet to sit around, talk about planning issues in the city, as long as you're not deliberating on a matter that's pending before you. You can, the, the phrase the court relied on was information gathering, gathering information from your peers or the community is part of what you're appointed to do. And for that, the public meetings laws don't apply, but if you're deliberating on something, then the public is entitled to notice and an opportunity to observe, maybe not participate, but if you're deliberating on something that's pending before you, it's a public meeting. And so if it's on the agenda or is likely to be on the agenda in the near future, I would not meet in majority of a quorum. Outside of that, feel free.
Thanks, yeah, that does, thank you.
Commissioner Lee's up next. After Commissioner Lee, I think we should probably move on with your slideshow, Chris, because I know we have several other things to speak to, so Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I've found it kind of uncomfortable the last two times that one of the city council members has sent us messages about her particular view on a subject and copied all the council and all the commissioners. And I don't know if there's anything wrong with that, but maybe just irritating.
Well, it's a matter that's pending before the, the planning commission, and it's likely to come before the city council, what it, what it suggests is a predisposition on the part of the city councillor. And if a decision maker has decided the matter before it even arrives at their desk, that's bias, right? You can no longer make an objective decision because you have already pre decided the outcome. So that kind of communication certainly suggests bias, and if I was on the opposite side of the issues of that city councillor, I would hammer them with that at the plant, at the city council meeting. I absolutely would, would just pound the desk and say, you're biased and you need to recuse yourself. So a city councillor that does that needs to be very careful.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'll add to that is, I would just say for any city councillor or planning commissioner that does that, chooses to do that, as Chris said, just be very careful and my opinion on it is, don't try to persuade everybody else on how they should vote. And I think it can easily get to that if you're not careful with what you say in the email.
Because of these next things, particularly if it's a residential development. Prior to nineteen, or sorry, two thousand seventeen, go back one, Kelly. This is the core of, of a lot of what's going on in land use around the state today. A local government may adopt and apply only clear and objective standards, conditions and procedures regulating the development of housing. So if you have pending before you a residential subdivision or partition, you must, you may adopt and apply only clear and objective standards, and this goes back to the question, well, how clear and objective do they have to be? Does that be unarguable? No, probably not that clear and objective, but pretty close, right? And this used to say regulating the development of needed housing, but in two thousand seventeen, the legislature amended it to say regulating the development of housing, comma, including needed housing. So now the statute applies to all residential development, full stop. No exceptions. Kelly, jump to the next slide now. Keep in mind, subsection four says, except as provided in subsection six, and subsection six says, in addition to the approval process for housing based on clear and objective standards required in sub four, a local government may adopt and apply alternative, an alternative approval process for residential development based on approval criteria regulating whole or part appearance or aesthetics that are not clear and objective. The sort of paradigm example of this kind of standard is a criteria that says the development has to be consistent with the overall character of the neighborhood. Well, what is the overall consistent with, an overall character of the neighborhood, how big is the neighborhood? What is the character of the neighborhood? All of those are subjective terms. Right? And you would not be able to apply a standard like that under subsection four, but you can under subsection six. This is an alternative approval process. Which you can apply if the applicant retains the option of proceeding under the clear and objective process or the more discretionary process. And I got in a little trouble, full disclosure here, with the city council recently when I was trying to describe this without reference to the statute, statutory language, and I used the word discretionary approval criteria discretionary process. And then all they heard was the word discretion, they said, oh, we have discretion, we can sort of decide this decision however we want. No, 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 that's not, that's not what I mean. What I mean is, what we call the discretionary process, again, back to the magic language, the discretionary process is this process that allows you to review an application based on criteria that regulate in whole or part appearance or aesthetics. As a practical matter, in the Sandy City Code, that in most city codes, that's the planned development process or the planned unit development process. It gives the developer a benefit of a more flexible design process. They can vary lot size, they can vary densities to some extent, they can vary setbacks, and you can, you can come, but you can be more flexible in your development. The flip side is, the city gets to apply appearance or aesthetics criteria, non-clear and objective, more discretionary criteria. If the developer doesn't want to open itself up to a discretionary review process, it can apply under the subsection four process. You have to have, you have to have at least a subsection four clear and objective process in your code. You may also have a discretionary review process. So if application comes through and all they want is a straight residential subdivision, all you can apply are clear and objective standards. If they agree to go ahead with a PD, then you can apply more discretionary standards regulating aesthetics, lot sizes, things. But the developer gets more flexibility in their design. And different cities offer developers different sort of incentives to get them to go through the discretionary process. And different cities offer developers different sort of incentives to get them to go through the discretionary process. But so they'll allow, yeah, for example, you can, we'll approve it as long as it, you dedicate twice the amount of open space that would normally be required. So the city gets twice the amount of open space, developer gets a guaranteed approval. So it can vary quite a bit, but I did want to point this out. This is the neat, what's called the needed housing statute because of that term that got used, gets used in the statute. But it's a clear and objective process.
We did have a question from Commissioner Carlton, if, if you want to take that question.
Go ahead, please, please, yes.
Yeah, Chris, just quickly. It seems like under six that if you, you know, if you prove it, you know, everything's, I guess, it's kind of fine. But if you somehow disapprove it, it seems like it would, I mean, it really gets interesting on how, how do you justify that? I mean, how do you say it didn't have the appearance or aesthetics? Because you, you alluded a little bit earlier that, well, you actually had, maybe they already cut a deal that give us twice the open space, then do whatever you want. That, that kind of sounds like horse trading at the bar, but.
Oh, it is, it is. I mean, and when I, I got familiar with this process over in the city of Sherwood. And there said essentially, if the developer provides sufficient public amenities, they can, you know, vary lot sizes, housing types, the, what was the, the one that just came through? The views, right? They wanted to vary housing types. If they went with a straight residential subdivision, it would have all been single family. They wanted some multifamily, so they went with the planned development process. If your code said something like there are sufficient amenities, then you engage in exactly that kind of horse trading in a planning commission meeting or a city council meeting. Did they dedicate enough open space? Is, do you want another top park? Do you, you know, what, sort of, do you want a meandering path or straight sidewalks? What kind of public amenities are that, are we willing to, are they willing to give in return for the ability to develop a more flexible product? The developers want a more flexible product. That's why they go through the PD process. If you, if it's properly designed, the city should be able to get something in return.
It just, it just seems to me like we go through all this effort to help all the code with numbers, you know, setbacks, you know, all kinds of numbers everywhere, all right? And when they go through this process, they call those numbers out the window. It could seem like any developer could, if they were to choose, could use this process for the section four process. Is that correct?
Well, it, it comes down to the details of your code, right? The devil will be in the details. And even in the plan development process, typically things like setbacks and height limits and so on are not subject to discussion unless it's mixed housing types. Obviously with the attached housing, you're not going to have setbacks because there's, it's shared wall construction. But it comes down to how well drafted the code is, what kinds of things can be varied or, or altered through the plan development process in which things can't. But it's not the case that all numeric standards are thrown out the window in the plan development process. I don't want to give that, that impression. So for example, I know in your code, the, I think it allowed a density bonus through the day, plan development process, but capped it at 10% or some number. So you could, could increase the number of units through the plan development process, but it's not unlimited. It's not as if all the numbers are thrown out the window.
Yeah, it just, you know, I guess I've been in the commission now for a while. So kind of been through a lot of this stuff. And yes, we go through a lot of effort, you know, like when we expanded urban growth boundary. And, you know, and, you know, we had all this needs analysis. And so then you, you set up and you define the zones because that's going to get you the number of people. And, you know, through all of that. And, and then it just seemed like for this process that, to me, it just seemed like I went by the wayside. And it just said, hey, just do whatever you want to. But that's, maybe that's nearly not a good interpretation of it. But I just said, I just struggled with all that other work we do and all the stuff we apply. When this just seems to be very open.
Yeah, but two things real quick. One, we'll get into the limited land use discussion, but that, all of the planning you do and up, updating a comprehensive plan is in, you know, don't shoot the messenger, but it's wasted if you don't later on incorporate it into your development code. Updating your comp plan is only half of the game, half of the process. The other part is incorporating those changes into your development code. So the other thing I need to say, Kelly's not going to like this, is I think your code could stand a lot of improvement. And Kelly's got enough on his plate and the last thing he needs to do is, it wants to be doing is updating plan development code sections and other things. But I think there's still places where the code could be improved.
Yeah, well, I think he probably knows that, though he doesn't like the message.
Yeah, I'm, I'm well aware of the message. I will say, I think Dawn is correct, though, that our PD code language right now is way more flexible than I think you would ever typically see it in most other cities. It does allow for pretty much the applicant task for variance requests for almost anything that's quantifiable, which is kind of unique, I think. Or, yeah.
And it's not, it's not clear to me what the city gets in return, frankly.
Sorry, quantitative, that's what I meant to say. Yeah, yeah, it's, besides the open space, the city doesn't really get much else from what I can tell. Commissioner Maite has his hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I, I think you started to answer it because the question I had was when I'm reading the code and I see an absence of a, a clear and objective standard. Now, given an example that I've heard multiple times since I've become a planning commissioner is about the density or traffic count on a street where a lot of citizens come in and argue that we don't, you know, there's going to be too much traffic. And I remember doing one several months back and I, I was looking for that clear and objective standard of what is defined as too much traffic. And it's just not written in there. So this is, this is really when there is an absent that the community sees that they want to have a standard enacted in our code. How, how do they, how does one go about getting the code updated to inject a clear and objective standard? Is it just petitioning the planning commission? Can you talk about that real quick?
Thank, thank you for that segue. Kelly, if you jump to the next slide. Remember that you delve out, you adopt or develop a comprehensive plan that's sort of the 30,000 foot level overview of how you want planning and zoning to go in the city, what you want the community to look like. And then that gets distilled down to the nuts and bolts of the development code. A limited land use decision is what you have seen recently. The views was a limited land use decision. It's a land, it's a final decision made by a city or county pertaining to a site within an urban growth boundary to approve or deny a subdivision or partition plan. That's a 12A capital A and then 12A capital B is or approval of denial and application based on discretionary standards designed to regulate physical characteristics of a use permitted outright. So like design review, if you've got a use that's permitted outright and all you're doing is Simon review, that's a, a limited land use decision. The part, that's the definition. Kelly, what's the next slide? I don't. Yeah, here we go. Oh, no, sorry, go back. I didn't give you the, the, there's another statute that governs what you do with a limited land use decision. That's 197.195. And it says that the city can only apply those comprehensive plan standards that have been incorporated into the city's development code. And an example came recently, a case we litigated in the city of Silverton. Silverton went through the cop planning process recently. And in their transportation system plan, which is part of their comprehensive plan, they have a parts master plan, a transportation system plan, public works plans, all of these plans, they're part of their comprehensive plan. In their transportation system plan, they had a, a goal that said, implement the following transportation standards. And they, that they wanted to implement a level of service level D, LOSD standard for all intersections in the city. And they defined how to measure that by peak hour and turn radius and so on. And the goal was to implement that through the development code. And when they got to development code, the only thing the development code said was an application has to comply with the various provisions of the city's comprehensive plan, including master plan, transportation system plan, parks plan. Luba looked at that and said, just try it saying, oh, we're incorporating all that stuff by reference isn't good enough. You need to, if your comprehensive plan is as specific as saying you want a level of service C or D for all of your intersections, you have to put that in your development code. Otherwise, it's not clear and objective and you can't apply it. So Commissioner Maize and frankly Carlson, you do often a lot of work on your comp plan, but that's only half of the game. And if you don't take those specific things that you put into your comprehensive plan and then do the next step and amend your development code to incorporate those requirements, you might as well not go through the process because with the needed housing statute, you can't apply something that is just incorporated by reference. You have to actually incorporate the standard itself into your development code. Whether or not something is level of service D is unarguable. You'll have a transportation analysis from a transportation planner and it'll either meet the level of service D or not. It's unarguable, clearly clear and objective, but just incorporating cop plan standards by reference is not good enough. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I would say mostly the one that I'm still lingering on is if, if I'm a citizen, do I have the opportunity to ask for a code to have an amendment made on it? Can I, can I create that activity within the city government? Or do I go to the, the council to ask for that? Or is that left up strictly to the planning director and this commission to decide what the code looks like?
Well, as with most things in the world, it comes down to the money, right? The, the, the city council has budgeted a certain amount of money for the planning staff. And if they want that staff to be dedicated to coming up with comp plan amendments or code revisions rather than doing something else, that direction needs to come from the city council. Or that, you know, the planning director can say, we're getting a lot of, of community, what am I thinking? Comments from folks who want to see the code amended in particular way. And if the city council says, go ahead, then it, it actually takes a formal amendment to the city development code. It's called a type four amendment and it requires a particular public process and review process goes through the planning commission, the city council. Anyone can propose that or ask for it, but the city council has to really direct that it happen.
So just for clarity, what I heard you say was if I'm a citizen of Sandy and disagree with part of the code, I can appeal to the city councillors to enact an amendment on my behalf. Thank you.
Yeah, and they, they would tell the staff to make it happen. Staff would develop the language. It has to go through the, the type four process. City council can't just adopt it, you know, two weeks later. There is a process for developing those kinds of things. But yeah, absolutely, any city resident can ask the city council to initiate that kind of process.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think as you said, though, it comes down to money and time. So if somebody asked for something that was relatively simple and we agreed with it and the city council wanted to see us pursue that, I'm sure it could happen. If a citizen started making lots of requests, those are not going to occur. I just want to be very clear about that on Zoom here. And the only, the only other thing I wanted to say is to kind of bring this limited land use decision to something you all might be familiar with is more recently with Bailey Meadows, which is now called Shaley Meadows. We'll never know because it didn't go to Luba, but the applicant's attorney was arguing that our code did not have ADT standards sufficiently adopted into the code. And therefore they could just use Melissa Avenue for all their trips, all 100 houses. Thankfully, the city and the applicant negotiated. And now we have a second road, Gunderson Road. And since that time, Chris, Mr. Korean has been very instrumental. He and David helped staff, myself and Emily modify the code. So now that that is expressly stated in the code for a local street, how many trips it cannot exceed.
Well, and one other point on that, and I, I want to come back to Shelley, but that was exactly what happened in the, the Silverton case. There was a level of service that was not, that everybody expected, but was not in the code. And you had a problem. And the other thing with that city of Silverton case, and we, I've seen it in two other cases now, just recently, there's a provision in the state statute that allows Luba to make the city pay the appellant's attorney's fees if they appeal a residential development project. It's a city denies it and it gets appealed to Luba and Luba reverses the city. The city will be directed to issue the permit and pay the appellant's attorney's fees. And that's happened at least twice recently in the city of Sandy and the city of the Dallas. So there is a financial penalty to getting cavalier about your clear and objective standards.
City of Silverton.
City of Silverton, sorry.
Shelley, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, um, I have a question about burden of proof. Is the burden of proof on the city to argue why a standard is clear and objective? Or is the burden of proof on the applicant to argue that a standard is not clear and objective?
No, the, the standard, the burden is always on the person seeking an application. When you go to apply for a job, you have to convince the, the boss that you meet the qualifications. Here, the applicant has to demonstrate that their project meets all of the approval criteria. And that's true at both levels. They have that obligation at the planning commission. And if the planning commission's decision is peel the city council, they have the burden there as well. The burden is always on the applicant through to the point of a final local decision.
Okay, so what happens when you run into a situation where there's just subjective disagreement? That an applicant says this is not a clear and objective standard and the city says, yes, it's clearly.
It's the applicant's application, but it's the city's decision. At the end of the day, the city gets to interpret its code and the applicant may disagree. The neighbors may disagree, the neighborhood association may disagree. I may disagree, but at the end of the day, it's the city's decision. And you get, you get to interpret your own code and you have to stand by that decision.
Right, okay. Uh, but then ultimately it could be up to Luba to interpret it, correct?
Yes and no. Luba will defer to a city's interpretation of its own code if that interpretation came from the city council. The theory is that nobody knows better what the city council intended when it enacted a provision than the city council itself. So Luba will not defer to a hearings officer's interpretation to the planning commission's interpretation, but it will defer to a city council's interpretation, provided that interpretation is plausible. That's the legal standard plausible. And Luba increasingly in recent, I would say, last 18 months or so, is finding more and more local decisions not plausible. So you need to be a little bit careful being, you know, interpreting your code to mean, you know, black to mean white, day to mean night, you can't do that. It's not.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Do you want me to advance?
We're running out of time a little bit here, so I want to jump on one, the constitutional, go ahead and jump the last slide there. There's three cases that you need to know about. Two of them you've probably heard of, maybe the third. The first one is Nolan, that's Nolan versus Carol, California Coastal Commission. You can, the planning commission, when a development application comes before you, you can approve it if it meets the criteria, you can deny it if it doesn't. Or you can impose criteria that makes sure that it meets, impose conditions to ensure that it meets the criteria. So you can approve, approve with conditions or deny. Any of your conditions have to have a, what's called a nexus to the application itself. And in Nolan, the property owner was just applying to, for a building permit to put an addition on the house. And the coastal commission said, that's fine, but you have to give us a public access easement down your side yard so that the public can get to the beach behind your house. And the court said, there is no nexus between these people, which is wanting to put an addition on their house and the public's desire to get it to the beach. No connection between those two things. So if developer wants to build some houses, you can't say, that's fine, but you have to build, you know, dedicate some money for public art at city hall. No connection between residential subdivision and public art at city hall. There has to be a nexus. Assuming you have that nexus, the second thing is conditions have to be roughly proportionate to the impact of the development. You can't, if somebody's just, you know, putting in 12 lot subdivision, you can't require them to build a freeway interchange. I mean, that's tens of millions of dollars and far exceeds the impact of the development. So you, other words I like are impact and offset the impact of the development. So you look at what impact the development's going to have and then you can impose conditions that are roughly proportionate. The court said mathematical precision is not required. You don't, this is not rocket science, but it has to pass the straight face test. And then finally, and this was new, net Dolan always applied, was the court, the Supreme Court looking at the fifth amendment to the United States Constitution, which says the government cannot take private property for public purpose unless it pays for it. It always applied to them taking an interest in your property, either the property itself and putting a freeway on top of it or an easement across. and putting a freeway on top of it, or an easement across it for public access, or some interest in the property. Koontz extended that principle to just an obligation to pay money. So if, and in Koontz, it was the, the issue was offsite wetland mitigation. Koontz wanted to develop his property, had a bunch of wetlands on it. The St. John's River Water District there said, that's fine, but you're going to have to do some wetlands mitigation. You don't have enough on your property, but there's a bunch of wetlands down the road. Why don't you mitigate those? Koontz didn't want to spend the money and, but the court, the city or the district never took any of Koontz's property. So it was unclear how, what constitutional provision it fits under. But at the end of the day, if you want to require a developer to improve an intersection, to add turn lanes, to put in traffic signals, to put in a, to extend a public pathway, to build a park. If you wanted to require the developer to spend money, either onsite or offsite, you have to be able to connect, both show a nexus and you have to make sure that the obligation is roughly proportionate to the impact of that development. Right? Prior to Koontz, Dolan only applied to, and the city taking an interest in real property. Now it's just any obligation to spend money. And then the last thing I want to touch on is this case Brown versus City of Medford. And in this case, Mr. Brown had a parcel and he wanted to split it into two. The the one parcel one where his house was and parcel two would be a flag lot. He was going to put another house on the flag lot. And they exited onto a street on the northern front edge of his property. Well, the the backside of his property, the south side had, was recently approved for subdivision. And the subdivision developer had to put in half street improvements. And when Brown came in for his partition, the city said, well, great, we need the other half of that right of way across your southern boundary because we're putting in a road here to handle all this traffic from the subdivision and future development and so on. And Brown said, all I have is a two parcel partition. How on earth can you require me to dedicate all of this property for a road that I'm not even going to use? Because the driveways to his parcels were on, completely on the other side, the north side of his property. And the court looked at that and, well, let me back up. The city of Medford said, well, our code requires that when you either a subdivision or partition, you have to do dedicate the right of way necessary for roads that are shown on our transportation plan. Code is very clear on that. We can't just ignore what our code says. At the end of the day, the answer is, yeah, you do. You have to ignore what your code says. If it's, if what you're asking the developer to give up in order to comply with that criteria is not roughly proportionate or there's no nexus, you have to ignore what your code says. And that's hard for people to understand. But there's a difference between something that's unconstitutional on its face as it's written versus something that's unconstitutional as applied to a particular circumstance. And in Brown's case, the court said, he's, he's adding one house that's going to exit to this road, that's going to get access from this road on the north, and you're requiring him to dedicate property across his southern boundary. There's no nexus between those two things. And we don't care if your code requires that. You can't apply your code in that circumstance. And so the city of Medford not only had to approve the partition, they could not get the road right of way. And they had to pay Mr. Brown's attorney fees. So just because there are these constitutional considerations that are always lurking there in the background. And you have to be willing sometimes to take a step back from the requirements of your code if the result would violate one of these three constitutional provisions, constitutional considerations. Does that make sense? I hope, doesn't come up very often, but when it does, it can be a difficult one to to grasp. And and one frankly for the public to grasp because they'll come to the hearing before and get up and testify that you have to do what your code says. The law has to apply to everybody equally. Reality is if it results in a disproportionate impact on the developer, then you have to ignore the code provision.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is not exactly related, but right now, you know, I've been, I have never tried to hide this. Our municipal code, the sign code, which Chris has also worked with us on, we just haven't had an opportunity to bring it to council yet. It has provisions in it that would be unconstitutional because it determines that we can look and review content. Right. And so I, even though the code says that and it said that for decades now, when we review sign permits, we never look at those sections because it's unconstitutional. Another one that's more recent is the ADU section within chapter 17. It still has requirements for owner occupancy. With the House Bill 2001 being passed as of January 1st of 2021, we can't require that anymore. So the ADUs have been applied for since that time. We haven't updated our code. We're just ignoring that because it's unconstitutional, that section.
Well, it's not unconstitutional, but the statute prevails over your code. The statute, constitutional provision, but the principle is the same. There are these considerations that come from higher legal authorities, whether the constitution or state statute, that sometimes will require you to ignore what's in your code. Keeping your code up to date is a constantly evolving process.
I I just want to present a few examples within our existing code that is not in compliance and we're just choosing to ignore because they're not within the law anymore.
Right. All right. Thanks, everyone. Looks like we have got a couple minutes before you get to the rest of your agenda. If there are no more questions, thanks, everyone.
And I I told Chris that I will send out a PDF copy of the PowerPoint that was presented tonight. So if you want to reference any of those ORSs or any of the things that Chris referenced. And if you have further questions or want follow up, you can always email me and I'll I'll get the information from Chris or David.
Thank you, Chris. Very informative and I say thank you on behalf of the public too, because I always like to make sure the public gets their questions answered that I know they're looking for as well. So thank you.
Good. Yeah, I hope they're watching. Thank you, Councilor or Commissioner Mays.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Also, this is probably chapter one. I'm sure there's more chapters to come.
Very good. Thank you so much. I appreciated it as well. I've been around long enough to know back in the day when Nolan and Dolan were spoken of about every one of our meetings. That was, it was a hot item on everybody's thoughts. All right, in our packet, we had minutes from two meetings, our January and February meetings. We'll take them one at a time. So any additions, corrections, changes to the January 25 minutes. While while you're you're finding them or thinking about that, Jan, just what we have normally, what we have done is for for commissioners who weren't at a meeting, they usually abstain from the vote, the logic being you can't vote on minutes of a meeting you weren't at.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you that because that's the normal procedure I'm used to.
Okay, so the January 25, if nobody has any corrections, we'll take a motion.
Jeremy, the motion that we accept the January 25 meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, that was moved by Ron, seconded by Chris, I think. All in favor, wave your hands, thumbs up. Any abstentions? Okay, Jan, did you, do I need to say names for, for you, Kelly? Are you, who's?
I, not on this one. I got it.
Okay, let's move on to the February 22 minutes. Any changes, anybody noted there? If not, we'll move to a motion.
Move, we approve the minutes of the February 22 meeting.
Second that.
Been moved by Don, seconded by Hollis to approve the February 22 minutes. All in favor, thumbs up, wave your hand. Any abstentions? One abstention. Motion carried. Minutes are approved.
Who is the abstention? I'm sorry.
Uh, Jan.
Okay.
Well, she was at that meeting, wasn't she?
Yeah, she, she doesn't have to abstain if she doesn't want, because we don't actually have to swear in commissioners. So I think she was, I think you were officially a commissioner at that meeting, I believe, but you can.
Okay, I was thinking that was a joint meeting that wasn't.
Oh, I think she muted herself.
Well, it was a planning commission meeting that the city council attended because we opened and closed it.
Oh, okay. So I would vote yes then.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. This is a time when we give opportunity for anybody in the community, any citizens to speak to the planning commission on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. And I'll review the instructions on how to do that. If you're participating online, that is via Zoom, and you want to speak, you click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. That button's at the bottom of your screen. If you are participating via telephone, then you dial star nine and that will effectively raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. So it's hard for us to see who's here from the community because you can be here without your camera. You can be here on phone. So we'll just give any opportunity for any comments to the commission not related to tonight's public hearing. Hearings.
I have a hand up from Kathleen Walker. So I'm going to unmute.
Okay, Kathleen, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hear you fine.
Hi. Hey, I really enjoyed the, also the presentation tonight. I learned quite a bit more than the presentation that we got at the city council. And I really think that's helpful for all of us. One of the things that I wanted to just reference was the email that I sent you that was mentioned with, pointed out. But I think what's helpful with the past presentations we've recently had concerning affordable housing and some other changes to base the house bills and all is some of that information is kind of presented from a Portland centric standpoint. And what I really have enjoyed learning more about is kind of what Sandy's situation. And it really was surprising, what I think is so important for all of us to understand is kind of what our situation is. What are the existing conditions that we have? Our, our, our comp plan lines out the desired future conditions. And so, you know, do we have enough areas allocated for affordable housing? And, you know, what's, so in looking at that, it was really kind of surprising to me that, to see that a third of 31 point, 31% of our allocations are for multifamily and like 48% will allow, you know, duplexes and multifamily housing, which was really helped me understand that we were meeting that need, first of all. But I think what I would like to encourage all of us to do is to get a good understanding of what the existing conditions are for the allocations that we have for low, medium, high density out there in the town now. So that then when things come at us with proposed change, zone changes and things like that, we have a good idea of what's the existing balance now and what does, you know, what does that potential change do to that balance? The other thing I would just add is that if anybody doesn't want to get, you know, I, I, I did ask that that email be attached to the record for any kind of concern about ex parte contact. If anybody doesn't, sorry, that's my dog squeaking her toy. If anybody doesn't want any email, take, you know, I can certainly take, take you off any list and would be glad to honor your request not to hear from me. So just let me know and I'm, and I'll do that. But I really appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing and I encourage us to kind of look. I know there's a few things that are, you know, we're hearing about our code that have some issues. I really hope that we can work together, but especially with you guys, you know, that's going to be taken on your shoulders to kind of lead the way at, at getting these clear and objective, more clear and more objective or whatever the changes that, you know, where we do have some loopholes. I really hope that you guys, you know, take the mantle and try to close those loopholes for us. So yeah, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other hands, Kelly?
Uh, no.
Okay, we can move to your director's report. You, everybody got a copy. I'm sure you've read it. Any questions? And we can kind of fold this a little bit into number eight on the agenda for just any discussion. But any, any questions for Kelly on his report?
The one thing I did want to explain in greater detail is, so I'm going to try to, in the future, I'm going to try to do it like this. I've been, you know, I've, I told you guys when Commissioner Lasowski asks for these reports, which I think are a great idea, by the way. I've been trying to play around with exactly how I want to present them to you guys, such change like three or four times already. But I think, I think it's going to be more in this strategy where it talks about upcoming hearing items. Just to give you guys a very like 30,000 foot elevation of what you're going to be hearing in the near future. Recent decisions that staff made or that the city council may have made. And then kind of just give you some more information on any big, long range planning projects. So I'll be updating, including comprehensive plan updates, probably, you know, five or six times a year on these until we get to the end in two to three years. The other thing I'm going to try to start doing that I didn't do on this one, but I, I thought of today is that include kind of an upcoming planning commission schedule. So just to remind everybody when the next meetings will be. So for example, just to remind everybody, we're going to take April off because you guys haven't had a month off. And I think since COVID began, so I think last March. So we're going to take April off and then in May, we're going to have our regular fourth Monday. Then on June 7th, Jordan, the city manager, has set up that there'll be a work session for the Parks Master Plan. And he's going to invite the planning commission and city council to that. It's mainly for a cost saving measure, so we don't have to pay the consultant twice to make the same exact presentation. And then it's also, Jordan's hoping to be more of a collaborative approach so that the commission and council can kind of ask questions at the same time and that hopefully will lead to more of a collaborative discussion. So that's what we're going to try. The regular June meeting, I'm not sure if or when we're going to hold one. And then in July, it's going to be the fourth Monday of the month again. And that's most likely going to be the Parks Master Plan that you're looking at for consideration. And then also probably some other hearings as well. We're getting, I think, three or four new subdivisions in in the next couple weeks. You know, the views, Plan B, the Bull Run Terrace Plan B, since both those got denials. Were, the Bull Run Terrace has been appealed to Luba. It's on stay now and they, they're putting together a Plan B. The views, that was also denied by city council. The applicant has told us they will be appealing that to Luba as well. And they will also be proposing another proposal at the same time. So just on that one, just so you guys know, we're likely going to be seeing a Luba appeal run concurrently with a separate land use proposal. It's going to get very complicated for myself to try to explain it to the public. But so that's going to be very interesting. And then we also have two other subdivisions that are actually both going to get submitted in April. A small one behind the police station, that's like nine or 10 lots. And then a 40 something lotter off of Kelso Road right by Sandy Woods. So I don't know if either one of those projects will be elevated to a planning commission review, but there's always a chance that they would be appealed to you guys. So just, we're going to have a very busy schedule coming up, just wanted to let you guys know. And then the other thing I had, and I'll take questions first. But if you don't have any, I will turn it over to Shelley because she had some questions in regard to you guys selecting some people for comp plan committee assignments. And I know the city council is going to be requested to do something similar. If I had my act together better before I left for vacation last week, we would have put a little staff report item together for this, but we didn't. So it's going to be a little bit more impromptu, my apologies. But so what, once you guys are done with your questions of me, then we can turn it to Shelley. And then after that, you guys can go back into your own commission discussion if you'd like.
I think Hollis, you had a question?
Uh, no, it's been answered.
Okay. Anyone else with a question?
When is, when is the Parks meeting in June?
I think I sent you guys an email. It's going to be June 7th, which I believe is the first Monday at 6:00 PM. And I would, I would anticipate, I'll be working with Jeff Approdi to send you guys panelist invites. But I just got the information yesterday that, or last Friday, that it will be June 7. And if you, if you can't attend that, as always, it will be recorded on YouTube and you could watch that prior to the July hearing for the item.
Good, because I will be in Alaska. Okay, Steve, you had a, you had your hand up before we go to Shelley.
Oh, what is? Sura board?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Sura board. It's mentioned on the Les Schwab model.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't explain that acronym. It's the Sandy Urban Renewal Agency.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. I live in a world of acronyms, even though I actually really do not like acronyms and I'm not very good at them. So I'm right there with you.
Shelley?
I'll be quick. So we are putting together a couple of committees for some comp plan activities. We are looking at putting together an consultant selection committee and a public engagement committee. So each one of these committees will have one counselor and one planning commissioner. Just to give you a very brief overview of what the responsibilities of those committees are going to be, the RFQ, the consultant selection committee will review the RFQ. Once we get it finished, once it's ready to go out into the ether, they'll review it, give any feedback. And then once we start getting proposals in, they will help us score those proposals and finally select a consultant. So that's more kind of the upfront work of selecting a consultant. And then the public engagement committee, again, one counselor, one commissioner will be overseeing all of the public engagement activities. And so, for example, we're looking at putting together a citizen advisory council of about 10 to 12 residents in Sandy. And so the public engagement committee will help select those residents based on applications. So I don't know, Kelly, if you wanted to decide those people tonight, or if you wanted to wait to the next in May, or how you wanted to do that?
What would be more helpful to you? Is May too late or is tonight?
The sooner the better.
The May would be pretty late, especially for the consultant selection committee, because we're hoping to put in an RFP, I believe in April.
Yeah.
I mean, and our request for qualifications for consultants to then give us their qualifications, then we, that committee will be looking through all those and then making a decision on who to then go with. So for any of you that don't understand how that works, the request for qualifications process is when you select a consultant over $100,000, you have to use that process in the state of Oregon. And you just select based on qualifications and their resume and past experiences. Then after that, then you negotiate on a price. It's kind of a weird way of doing things, in my opinion. So you don't know the price upfront and then you work on a price and a scope of work. And if you can't come to terms on the price, then you can go to the second highest ranked firm through the RFQ process. So you would be whoever selected for that committee would be involved on trying to choose the consultant that we're going with and setting the scope for work with them and helping Shelley out and the other city counselor that's selected and anybody else that might be on that committee.
But just maybe it's a quick question on contracting. I mean, I'm used to the RPN RFQ processes, but on the RP process, usually there is a technical proposal, which is how good they are. And then a price proposal, they're submitted in separate envelopes, opened at separate times. So are you saying that when you, in this, you don't actually have them submit a price proposal?
That is correct. Yeah, you don't, you don't know the price until after you've already said. So what we've done before, and I, you know, we've done, I've done this on numerous different projects. Just recently, we're going through it with demolition consultant services for the Sandy community site to start looking at the different costs for potentially demoing buildings there. And so, yeah, we select, in that case, we got three different people that bid. We then had a little committee that scored the, scored the proposals. And then we basically told everybody that we're committing to negotiations with one of these groups, however, to stand by in case we'd ever come to terms with them, then we would move on to the second ranked consultant. So yeah, we don't, we don't know the price point until after we've met and kind of set the scope of work with them.
But just, you know, just to throw out, I don't know if there's an option here, but if they submit a price proposal and you look at those, the idea is you're trying to get the best bang for the buck. So, you know, the one who gets the highest technical score may not give you the biggest bang for the buck, which is why you kind of have those done as separate, but you, you'll never know that.
Yeah, that's correct. And that, that's actually why I personally do not like the RFQ process at all, because in, in the private world, we would never just start negotiating with somebody without knowing their cost and how their costs are associated with other firms. That being said, some of the firms usually actually will say, in my different experiences, they'll actually give projects that are examples. So in this case, they might say, hey, we did a comp plan for Forest Grove or Independence Organ, which are similar sized, and this is how much it costs. And it's not actually against the rules to do that. So they can include that if they would like. And I actually prefer that because then you, you kind of have an understanding what their ballpark is.
Yeah, it just seems to me like if there's any option for the city council there, they might, might consider the way they're doing the contracting, if they're trying to get the biggest bang for the buck for the citizens of the city.
Well, we, we have a budget and it won't go over that budget. So yeah.
Okay, Hollis, you had your hand.
Yeah, thanks. Shelley, I just had a question. Could you say a little bit more? I'm not sure if I followed the public, the, the job of the public engagement committee. There'll be one counselor, one commissioner, and then they help oversee bringing on people from the community to be on the, on the committee. And then they sit on the committee with those people? I'm not sure if I got it.
It's all very bureaucratic. So there's the public engagement committee, which is the counselor and the commissioner. And then there's the citizen advisory council, or we can call them the citizen advisory committee. We can call them whatever they want, but that is going to be a separate group representing the interests of residents in Sandy. So the public engagement committee, the counselor and the commissioner, they're doing kind of more of the administrative oversight, where the interests of the residents will be represented by the citizen advisory. I want to make sure I use the same words. The citizen advisory committee, we'll call them that.
Okay. So, but, but staff will be the ones that are arranging like?
Oh, yeah. Planning the open houses, doing all of the online engagements, all of that will be done by, well, mostly me, some of the consultants as well, Emily and Kelly, of course. But overseeing that, making sure that we're on track and providing guidance and feedback will be the responsibility of the public engagement committee.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, let me ask this, because I think we might be able to help Shelley out tonight. As she described those two, two needs, did, did either one click with anybody in particular? And I see Hollis's hand up first, if you would like to volunteer?
I would. I'd be very interested in doing the public engagement committee if nobody else wants to.
Cool. And then also just to kind of add another layer to it. So the RFQ or the consultant selection committee will be just over the course of the summer, right until we select a consultant, whereas the public engagement committee will be ongoing throughout the entire process, if that changes anything.
Any objections to Hollis being, serving in that role or anybody else interested in it? I don't know what we'll do.
I don't, my guess is that Commissioner Hook is not objecting, but he does have his hand raised.
Oh, yes. Okay, Chris, Stephen?
I can volunteer for the other one. I was going to say I'll volunteer for either.
Okay. Any, any objections from anybody or? Anybody want to run for office or whatever?
Here, I just want to say thank you to Stephen and Hollis for volunteering more of their time. I defer. They can have.
Come, we didn't, we didn't mention all the perks that this comes with.
Yeah.
Latte?
Okay, well, we helped you out, Shelley, I hope.
Yeah, thank you. You make my life easier.
So Commissioner Hook for the RFQ selection committee process and Commissioner McLean Wenzel for the public engagement. I just want to get it right for the minutes.
That is correct.
Well, I'll be, we're talking to council in April about selecting members from council and then I'll be reaching out to each one of you about responsibilities and things like that. Thank you so much.
Okay, before we, before we move to new business, something that just came to my mind, I didn't come expecting to ask this, but just in hearing myself talk tonight, and when I sit here looking at the screen, and you can respond to this to me later in an email, but do any of you object by me referring to you by your first name and not calling you Commissioner this and Commissioner that? I don't want to bother.
My only request is that we're uniform, that, that either everybody's called Commissioner or everybody's called by their first name.
Okay, do you have a feeling one way or the other?
I don't really, I don't have a feeling unless, I mean, Kelly could jump in here, if it helps the public to hear the word commissioner or something, so they know who's talking, that is, that'd be the only reason I would suggest you consider it because we know each other and, you know, we're kind of on a friendly basis. But I would just ask Kelly if he felt there was any need.
I mean, I'll probably try to refer to you as Commissioner and your last name, although as you, as you know by now, I goof on it like every meeting multiple times. So I try my best.
So should that be our practice then?
It's really up to you guys. I think as staff, we do it more out of, I think, as Commissioner Carlton, I almost just called him Don, as Commissioner Carlton said pretty well, I think it is pretty helpful for the public. But we also just try to do it out of like respect, I think, more than anything else.
Okay. I can do that, but I will forget like you. So call me on it.
Yeah, it's more of a, it's, it's more, I'm, I'm one really bad at saying commissioner first. I just say the first name, but it's really, and I work for the state government in the executive position. So I said no better. It's a formal process that we should use.
Yeah. I think it's probably, it probably is easier for the public to know who's who.
Very well. We will, we will try to make that our practice. We won't police it, but we might mention it again some other time. All right. Are we okay to move right into the first public hearing?
Can we take a five minute stretch break?
Okay. I'm okay with that. I see enough thumbs up. We will take a brief standup break.
Are we gonna take a five?
Then we will move ahead. My clock is showing 8:02. We will open up public hearing number 21-001, the appeal.
If you're talking, we can't hear you.
I can hear him.
I hear him. He's fine, Commissioner.
Okay, is that any better, Commissioner Hook? Can you hear me any better? Everybody else is hearing me, but.
He's on mute, so.
Somebody else say something and see if.
Can you hear us?
Somebody hold, hold a sign up, Jerry. Steve, are you there?
He looks perplexed.
Now he's gone.
Yeah, he might need to log out and log back in real fast. So if we can just give him a minute, if you don't mind.
Sure.
That happens sometimes. It's inexplicable. It just does.
He looked like he was frozen for a few seconds.
He did.
Is that any better, Commissioner Hook?
I had to leave, sorry.
All right. I think everybody's in the room and hearing. So we have open public hearing 21-001, the appeal, Creekside Loop Appeal. And I will begin by calling for any abstentions from the planning commission. Okay, nothing seen or heard, any conflicts of interest? And we all know what conflicts of interest are now. It's fresh on our minds. Any of those to declare? All right, any ex parte contact? Nothing seen or heard? Any challenges from the public to the planning commission or to any individual planning commissioner? I assume since silence from Kelly means he is not seeing any hands. All right, for the public, again, for any testimony tonight and for the applicant, actually, in a sense, but if you want to participate online, excuse me, you're on Zoom, click the raise hand button, wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized then. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to, wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Any party may request that the hearing be continued to a later date or that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. From there, we will move to staff report. This is Emily.
Yep, I'm going to share my screen. All right. So tonight, to start, we're hearing an appeal of a staff level decision on a garage setback adjustment request for a duplex located on Creekside Loop. Just to give you an idea, this is Creekside Loop there coming off Tupper Road. So the site is east of Tupper there. In its own R3. The duplex is previously approved in 2018 as a separate file. The application that was submitted at that time included garage setbacks that were less than the 20 foot required garage setback, but the applicant had not requested a variance or an adjustment. And so as a condition of approval for that final order, condition A1 stated that prior to building permit final approval, the applicant shall redesign the site to accommodate the required 20 foot garage setback or apply for a special variance for unit A and a type two adjustment for unit B to incorporate the garage entrances as proposed. And then if the layout was modified, the applicant shall, shall submit a site plan to the city of Sandy for review and approval. So applicant came through within the tier application and approval time period with the building permit application. So this, the, the design review on the duplex is still active and valid. After that, the submitted or revised plan in compliance with that condition A1 of the final order that had updated. the app submitted a revised plan in compliance with that condition A1 of the final order that had updated proposed garage setbacks. They're both still less than 20 feet, so they did have to request the adjustments. They're requesting adjustments specifically to section seventeen forty thirty to reduce the required garage setbacks for, for the duplex from 20 feet to eighteen feet, two inches for one of the units, which is processed as a type-one adjustment, and seventeen feet, four inches for the second unit, which is processed to adjustment. So both of these were staff-level decisions as part of this original file here of twenty dash oh four nine, which was just the garage setback adjustment file. Here is the overall site plan. So you can see the two units. They're actually providing an interior garage space and then kind of a side parking space to the side of each unit as well as the garage setback area in front. So they're actually exceeding the off-street parking requirement. The, the parking space in front of the units is not, wouldn't actually be required by our code, but we know cars will park there, so we, you know, we kind of reviewed it with that in mind, that knowing cars would still be parked there. So just to zoom up into each of the units, this is proposed unit A, where they're requesting the type-one setback, or the type-one adjustment to reduce the setback from the required 20 feet to eighteen feet, two inches. And this is proposed unit B, where they're requesting, they were originally requesting a type-two adjustment to reduce the required 20-foot setback from 20 feet to seventeen feet, four inches. And it's, it would be a varied setback, but the minimum would be seventeen feet, four inches. And this is what the applicant requested. The staff decision on this was to approve the type-one adjustment for the garage setback for unit A. So allow that to be eighteen feet, two inches. And then staff actually denied the type-two adjustment for the garage setback for unit B, but approved a type-one adjustment with the condition that the minimum garage setback be eighteen feet for that unit B as well. So essentially, we approved type-one adjustments for both units. We received an appeal of the decision on January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and the appellant was requested is requesting that the planning commission deny both adjustments and require the applicant to provide the full 20-foot setback for the garage of both duplex units as required by section seventeen forty thirty. So our recommendations, you know, it's pretty straightforward. We're recommending that you review both the applicable documents here. So the final order that was issued by staff for file number twenty dash oh four nine ADJ, which was the original garage setback adjustment request that is being appealed tonight. And that also includes the original public testimony submitted by the appellant, as well as staff's analysis of the adjustment request and rationale for the decisions. That goes through the, the code criteria in chapter seventeen sixty-six for those adjustment requests. I mean, then, you know, we're also asking you to review the notice of intent to appeal, which includes the reasons for appealing the decision and requesting denial of the adjustment. And then based on that, you make a decision. The three kind of obvious decisions would be to uphold the staff decision, which approves type-one adjustments to the garage setbacks for both units. And then just refer to the final order that was already issued in December of twenty twenty. Another option would be to deny both garage setback adjustment requests as requested by the, the Mr. Trimble, the appellant, and require the garage setbacks to be, to meet the 20-foot minimum setback as required by the code. And then a third option would be to approve the applicant's original adjustment request that includes both the type-one and type-two garage setback adjustment. I guess there probably are other options of maybe approving a slightly different reduced setback amount or something like that, but these are kind of the three, the three main options, I think, before you tonight. So that concludes the staff presentation.
And just, just to remind everybody, the, I just got confirmation from our attorney because I forgot myself, but the applicant will have the first chance to go and then the appellant, and then we'll turn it over to public testimony. And I, Chairman Crosby, do, I hate to do this at the meeting, but do you have a script for appeals or would you like one put together?
No, I don't. I'm glad you said what you just said.
I couldn't remember either. I asked Mr. Creed and he clarified. Chris, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I would just treat it as a standard quasi-usual land use proceeding. Think back to our earlier discussion, yeah, applicant still has the burden to prove that they meet the criteria for this to be approved. So they get to go first, and because they have the burden, they also get rebuttal. So just start with the applicant, let them make their pitch, then the appellant can explain why they think the decision is wrong and, and let wrap up, oh, then allow public testimony on both sides, then wrap up with rebuttal. So the standard process, if you will.
And both parties do rebuttal?
No, only the, the applicant gets the final word.
Okay.
And are we going to have any time, time limit specified, Jerry?
We should, no more than fifteen minutes, which.
We kind of talked about, I think, about maybe trying to have those and maybe kind of stick to them to kind of make our readings more efficient.
I think fifteen minutes for both the applicant and the appellant. I don't anticipate either one of them taking that much time, but that can make the meeting pretty long.
Okay, so they each get seven and a half. So with that, we will move to the applicant presentation. And I haven't had to say it yet tonight, but please give us your name and your address for the record. You may, is it, is it?
Who's the applicant?
Yeah, which one's the?
Jeff Newberry. So he shows up twice.
Jeff, if you're speaking, we are not hearing you, so you may be speaking on the unit that is muted.
So. Are you there?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Oh, thanks for your time, guys. Yeah. I've never went through a process like this before, so I don't quite know what to say, but we, we spend a lot of time trying to develop this piece of property since it's kind of a, kind of a hard piece of property to build on and we've, we've tried to maximize what we can do there with, with creating a, a good structure and, and a good home where people live in, along with additional parking along the side, because parking is an issue there. And I get that. So just doing everything that we can to make a good place where people live. And that's it.
Okay.
Jeff, can I get your address?
Yes.
Mailing address, please.
It's four zero one one zero Southeast Meadowsong Road.
What was that, Meadowsong?
Yeah. Sandy, Oregon.
Okay. With that.
You have the rest of my minutes.
All right, we will move to the, the appellate testimony.
So can everyone hear me?
Yes, please give us your name and your address.
Okay, hi, my name is Erin Ferguson. I'm presenting on behalf of William Trimble. And my address is Peel Box ten, Sandy, Oregon, nine seven zero five five. Okay, so thank, thank you for having me. So as we said in the appeal, our biggest concern is the impact that it has to the on-street parking when the required setbacks aren't met. And I, I realized that the applicant is providing some off-street parking, but like as Emily mentioned, there will most likely be vehicles parked in front of the garages, because as we've seen, so William Trimble owns the planned unit development on Creekside Loop where this proposed unit fronts. And we already see that most of our units, people don't use the garages for parking. So they're using the driveways for parking and then off-street parking. So the biggest issue here is, you know, if you don't have the setbacks, you have vehicles kind of encroaching on the sidewalk, and then also you're already taking away from some of the off-street parking because of the new driveways. So I don't know if I can share my screen, but I just wanted to show a couple photos of what the current, like, parking situation is right there at Creekside Loop in front of this proposed unit. Let's see if I can share my screen. Am I, am I sharing?
There you go.
Okay. So let me pull up what I had here. So here's just a couple photos of different days. So this is on March thirteenth. This side on the left is right in front of the proposed development. It is, it's just full of cars and this, they, you know, I don't know if this is a separate issue, but this is a concern, because then there are two parking spaces will be gone on this off-street, on the on-street parking. And are the planned unit development that is accessed on Creekside Loop, it's thirty, it's fifteen buildings total, which is thirty units. So currently thirteen units of the thirty are occupied, and this is the situation. So we still have seventeen units that haven't been completed. And of those eight units don't have garages, so the on-street parking is becoming even more critical for the planned unit development, you know, that's already been approved and is in development. And then this was just from yesterday on a Sunday. It's, you know, the, the street's pretty full most of the time. A lot of it is people from the Tupper Apartments parking down on the street, but we still have, like I said, seventeen units that have not, you know, been developed that are in the planned unit development that will still be utilizing this on-street parking. And then what was my other thing? Okay. So I just wanted to show, that was our basic concern, that if you don't have those setbacks, you know, those, those people are parking on the street or encroaching on the sidewalk, and then maybe, which I did, we didn't say in our appeal, but maybe another option, which we've had to do on the Creekside Loop, PUD is asked for a variance in the rear setbacks versus the, you know, the front and garage setbacks to, to minimize that issue, but ask, you know, ask for a variance in the back versus the front. So that was basically our kind of view on, on the issue and why we were appealing it.
Ms. Ferguson, just, can you send those pictures to planning@ci.sandy.org.us? They, they have to be entered into as part of the record.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. I will do that now.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We will move on to public testimony. And I guess, Chris, is your advice to just go kind of a blanket proponent and opponent, or do we need to split it up before, between who is a proponent and opponent of the original and then the, the appeal or?
Unless, unless you think you will have difficulty discerning the difference between the two, you can just take them all.
Okay.
Single group.
I think we can handle that. So we will move to public testimony. We will do it in three sections. I will first call for those that are in favor of the proposal, which would be in favor of the appeal. And then we'll move to those who are not in favor of the appeal, and finally, we'll give opportunity for any neutral testimony. You are neither in favor or not in favor, and just have some comments or questions. And again, as before, if you're on Zoom, click the raised hand to be recognized. If you're on the telephone, it's star nine to raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. When you do begin your testimony, as you've already heard this evening, please state your name and your mailing address, which is needed for the record. So with that said, we will move right into any public testimony for individuals that are in favor of the proposal or would speak, would speak positively to either the original or to the appeal, and we'll keep, make sure you, let us know what you're speaking to.
Chairman Crosby, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. We move on to any proponent testimony. If you are not in favor of any aspect of the hearing tonight, now is the time to raise your hand.
Once again, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And finally, for any neutral testimony, you are neither in favor or opposed, but do have a comment or a question you would like to get into the record. Now is the time to raise your hand.
And I'll say it one more time, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. With that, we will go to Emily, if you have any recap that you'd like to share.
Um, I don't really have much to add, other than in, in the staff report, we actually, you know, we do have a lot more conditions, one of which is that just pointing out that it is a violation to block the sidewalk. So if, if the cars kind of, you know, if, if the cars encroach on that block for too long for that speed in front of the driveway, they, they should and can get sighted. Whether that actually happens would be more of a code enforcement issue. It's not something we can really control. People can call it in, though, for, for sure. The, the other thing, another condition was that we conditioned that those two spaces you saw on the side, so not the interior garage, but the two extra spaces on the side, that they be reserved for more oversized vehicles, which we see quite a bit of in Sandy. The main, the main reasoning for staff for sticking with the eighteen-foot minimum was that, that, that is what our standard parking space is. If you go to any commercial area in town, our standard space is nine feet by eighteen feet. So the, the eighteen-foot seemed reasonable to us as something to, to grant. But, you know, by all means, you can, you can require what the code requires, which is that 20-foot setback. Again, these are kind of extra, they are technically extra off-street parking spaces being provided by the applicant, kind of above and beyond what the code requires, which is only the two, and we can't unfortunately regulate what people use their garages for. And, you know, I would say probably, from what I see, ninety percent of people use their garage to store junk and not cars. But that's not something we can actually regulate. That, that space does still count technically as a required off-street parking space. That's pretty much all I had to add.
Okay. All right, we will move to the.
I see a couple, Chairman, I see.
Oh, okay, good questions.
Commissioner Carlton was first and Commissioner Hook was second.
All right, Commissioner Carlton, questions before, we haven't gone to rebuttal yet. We still need to do that, so.
No, I was gonna do it later, so no, I was premature.
Okay, then Commissioner Hook.
Can wait till rebuttals, Tim.
Okay. Okay, and then Commissioner Lee.
I will wait as well.
Okay.
All right. It may, it may come quickly. All right, we will move to rebuttal and, uh, so this would be the applicant's rebuttal. Jeff, for you, it would be any opportunity to. Respond to, uh, defend or otherwise explain anything that you've heard. Presented by, uh, staff or the appellant. Or the public which was silent tonight. So you have the floor if you want it.
Yeah, um. I do, I do wanna add a little something to this. So when, when planning, when we plan this duplex. If, if you notice, we've got three parking spots per side. There's, there's nobody else out there doing something like that. Uh, that's. That's a good thing to, to do something. Best I can, I guess. I guess that's what that is. But, uh, but yeah, that's, that's as much parking as I can provide. There's, there's no other duplexes around there. Providing that kind of parking. So with that, that's all I gotta say.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we could, uh, unless there's some disagreement, I think we could go and close the public hearing. I'm not. Anticipating much discussion with the, uh, applicant or appellant. Any disagreement on that? Okay, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion that we close the public hearing?
Well, second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner McLean. Wenzel and seconded by Commissioner Lusowski. All in favor, thumbs up, wave your hand. All right. Okay, and that is that if we need it for the record at eight thirty-one. All right, discussion. Now we can go probably in the order, original, uh, Commissioner Carlton first.
Okay, thanks. I really necessarily wanted to be first, but, uh, that, uh, just a couple of thoughts. You know, I'm, what I'm trying to do is listen very carefully to the testimony. And what I didn't hear at all from the applicant. Is, you know, why he can't have twenty feet. Normally we, we, we grant, you know, variance adjustment or whatever because what's on the site. You know, this needs to be looked at, but, um, so I've heard nothing that says why. They, why it can't be twenty feet. The code's twenty feet. There, the other. The appellant has said, oh, the concern about parking. Well, there's gonna be parking. It may only be eighteen feet, but you know, that's the concern is they're gonna park. You know, in the driveway, you know, so, you know, I'm, I, I'm pretty much saying we should go by the code and require the. The twenty feet, because I haven't heard any reason why. That is needed by the applicant to build this project.
Okay, the next, the next one originally had your hand up, I believe, was Commissioner Hook.
My question would be for, uh, staff and our attorney regarding the proposal to make. The side parking as required for larger vehicles. Um, I'm not familiar with anything in the code that says that we have the ability to. Require special parking for, for those types of things than a residential. Use. And so was hoping to get some clarification on that.
I don't know the answer to that. And I guess is you have code standards that specify parking dimensions, parking space dimensions or driveway. Dimensions, but I'll have to defer to staff.
There's nothing in the code per se. It was just, um. A, a condition associated with the approval of the adjustments that we came up with that would hopefully. Be proactive against having the, any larger vehicles like an F-150 parked in front of the driveway and making sure that those would kind of be on the sides. They wouldn't overhang the sidewalk. And where we, we can come up with conditions that are relevant to the adjustment or variance request. That aren't necessarily like stated in the code, but it's sort of. We, we approve the adjustment, but, but we, you know, with this additional recommendation that there be space for a larger vehicle.
Yeah, I was gonna say that the applicant in this case chose a non. The non-clear and objective path by asking for an appeal, uh, or an appeal, by asking for an adjustment. And therefore we granted the adjustment with some additional considerations that were conditioned. On the property and the applicant did not object to any of those conditions. As is evidenced by the applicant did not appeal our decision. It was the appellant.
So.
I'm gonna go in order, uh, because I think Commissioner Lee had your hand up next.
Yes, um, my question was how much off-street parking does the development across the street have?
I assume that's a question of staff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I worked on that development. Are, are you talking about the? So there's, there's two developments in Creekside Loop. There's the apartment complex that sits up on top of the hill. And then.
Referring to by the appellant.
Oh, the, the units that are owned by the appellant. They have two spaces per unit, but one of those spaces is a garage space and is probably full of stuff for the most part. So most of those sites probably have legitimately one. Off-street parking space that's actually usable. Um, you know, there might be a case where some of the people don't use their garage for storage, but. From what I've observed from going on Creekside Loop is that most of those garages are full of stuff, kind of as storage units. When I've seen the garage doors open. So I would say most have one space, some may have two spaces.
Okay, um, my feeling would be that the eighteen feet would be adequate since the. Applicant, the applicant who's bringing the project. Has specified off-street parking that would take care of larger vehicles.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just add that that was kind of our feeling as well. Staff ceiling when we granted the adjustment was that. Whether they're meeting the code or not, um, which they're not, they're two feet shy of it. They're providing one more space than all the other duplexes already on Creekside Loop. And also keeping in mind, House Bill two thousand and one will make that even less. So. We felt that the applicant is going above and beyond what's in the code and. Furthermore, really what's gonna be above and beyond the code once HB two thousand and one is passed.
Okay, Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Yeah, um, I would agree with Commissioner Lee. Uh, it seems to me that the. That the eighteen feet, two inches or eighteen feet that the staff, uh, found to be adequate, given the other parking that's available. Was an appropriate thing to grant, and so I would be in favor of that.
Okay, Commissioner Maithen.
But in there real fast. Sorry, thank you, Chairman. I think this is a, a, a good example of what we heard earlier today about period objective standards in seventeen four oh three oh. At me, it's pretty clear requires a twenty foot. And they came in and they asked for a, a shorter distance. And I think it also is clear in seventeen six six one oh that the director has a decision. The, to make a decision on a ten percent variance for type one or a twenty percent variance on a type two, if it meets the criteria. Listed in A, B, C, D, and E, and I, I think it does in all accounts. Uh, I look at the adjustment criteria. There's four. Uh, clear directions it gives in seventeen sixty-six forty. I don't see any objection with that. I think the applicant has provided ample parking space. I was concerned about the driveway. Um, if the driveway was not wide enough. You would get curbside parking, but I can see they've extended the driveway, the entire distance of the drive in front of the garage and the third parking space on the side of the house. So it's gonna clear out all those parked cars that are there. And allow for ease access for the duplex owners. So I, I do also agree with Commissioner Lee and Commissioner McLean Wenzel that, uh, the, the staff has done a great job. I believe with their various requests and I would offer my approval, uh, to continue with that.
Okay. Commissioner Lusowski.
Well, ditto's with Commissioner Lee, McLean, Wenzel, Maithen. In terms of, I think that staff did the, the appropriate thing. When they've, when they, uh, proved, proved it with conditions. Um, and again, looking at this, it's, doesn't matter if it's this. Uh, wants in front of us or not. It's not up to neighbors to make up for the parking for somebody else. Right? So that, I mean, that's kind of what I heard is, hey, there's, you can park here now, but if you take it away. Um, and again, if it was with House Bill two thousand and one, you could have. The, it, the duplex being in there with less than half of the parking that they're recommending. So anyway, I'm in favor with what staff initially recommended. It's like to see that happen.
Okay. I had one question for, um, Emily. On these. I'm, I'm looking at the, um, the site plan map. The, the side parking that we're calling the third parking area. That if the, the length out to the sidewalk, it, it says in the box nine by eighteen. And it appears that that's the box. I'm assuming, or am I assuming correctly that the distance? The length out to the sidewalk is far more than eighteen feet. Do you understand what?
I was gonna ask, can, can we pull up? Emily, can you pull up your slideshow? So everybody knows what we're exactly looking about, looking at?
Yeah, I was just looking at my mouse. I couldn't unmute, um.
Yeah, I think it says the driveway is twenty feet, so.
Right, I'm talking about the, the one to the left where it says nine by eighteen off-street parking.
Great. So over here. So, yeah, I mean, just judging from, if this is eighteen feet, two inches. You know, two, and this is the property line here. I don't know if you guys can see my mouse, but. Yeah, this is much longer than nine by eighteen. The other thing is, I, I actually, I don't know off the top of my head, like the, the wheelbase of, um, like an F-150 or something. But, um, my guess is that even, you know, uh. There would be space for the car to kind of go over, uh, where, I guess where the landscaping is a little bit in the side one as well, but I think, um. I don't have it. You can't scale it here, but just judging from this being eighteen feet, this is probably. I don't know, twenty. Four or some, I don't know. It's definitely, it's definitely more than twenty.
Okay, that's, cuz I, I don't have an F-150. I do have a Silverado and I know that if I were to park it in that side. One that we just looked at, I would not be blocking the sidewalk. So that's, that was one of my thoughts and I, I sympathize with the desire to. Put a condition in to require them to park oversized vehicles there. And I wouldn't say take it out. It, it's gonna be an awkward enforcement thing. But it's, uh, it kind of puts them on notice that if you have a bigger rig, that's where you would put it. And any other. Vehicle would be able to fit, um, in front of the garage. So personally, I'm, I'm falling in the camp of upholding the staff's decision. Which I believe is what I heard from most others with, um. Probably the exception of Commissioner Carlton. Uh, Commissioner Lusowski, you still have your hand up. Did you have a comment? I don't know how you get it down.
Uh, Kelly does it.
No, you press down below.
Okay, now. I ask, I had asked you a question, Commissioner Carlton. So if you have a response before I go to Commissioner Hook.
No, no, I mean, you basically said it was correct. And I guess.
Okay.
What, what I'm just responding to is, I know of all the things the staff has done. I appreciate their work, um, et cetera. It's just that I kind of, Chris, take it back to the very beginning. We have the code. The code says it should be twenty feet. I haven't heard any reason why it can't be twenty feet from the applicant. I've heard all these other things. I mean, they're all fine. But they're not to the point. The point is, why can't it be twenty feet? And tha- that's the whole basis of why you'd ask for. A, a variance as opposed to saying, we're going to deliberately go to eighteen and we're gonna put this on the side. Is that okay? You know, it's like you're starting with the mitigation before you're even, uh, showing why you can't meet the code. So I'm, I'm just kind of coming down on the side of the code a little bit until the applicant. Can, can share why it can't be twenty feet. That's what I, that's kind of my point.
That's a logical question.
Can I add one certain detail?
Sure.
But the hearings closed, so the applicant can't really speak to this at this point.
Correct.
But I can let you guys know that if you look at page one of the decision. I think it's page five of sixteen. It's the second finding. Basically what the applicant said, and you can look at the applicant's materials as well, but. It basically said the reduced setback will allow construction of a duplex on the lot while meeting all other applicable setback requirements. So I think what we, what we, um. Gain from the applicant submission was that. Basically to go with a standard duplex design without doing like a specialty custom design. Which I, I have never seen a single custom design in Sandy since I've worked here for duplex. Not saying it can't be done, but it's just not typical. That they can meet all setbacks as required, except for the front setback for the garage setback. So that was the explanation. Uh, why the applicant wanted the setback, uh, adjustment. I mean, in all, in all honesty, type one adjustments, and Emily can share this as well. Uh, Mr. Newberry gave more reason for why he needed it than ninety percent of applicants. Type one adjustments. Are typically supported by staff because it's a ten percent adjustment to the code. We don't always approve them. But we also don't see like a robust analysis that's put together by. Uh, a land use consultant or anything like that. It's, it's a three hundred and something dollar fee and it's a very simple process, so. I do wanna show a little support to Mr. Newberry that what he did is actually above and beyond what we typically see. Whether that's good or not, I don't know, but. There's usually not much explanation to it for an adjustment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hook.
So I, my feelings on this are, I would have preferred the applicant to provide a little bit more detail of why he was requesting this, even though it is. Buried here in, in the material that we got. It would certainly have helped to, uh, have a understanding in his own words of, of. Why he was looking for that as well as, you know, why could he not, uh, have proposed what the appellate had recommend, uh, recommended by reducing the rear setback. For company, uh, the garage. I also feel that, you know, the, the code is what it, what it is. However. We do have the, uh, opportunity to, to make adjustments and, uh, I would be in favor of, uh, of making the adjustment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Maithen.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to give you the data you asked a question about. Uh, most of you know that I dabble in automotive on the side. Ten feet is a short bed, up to fourteen and a half feet for a long bed. Thank you.
Is that the wheelbase or the bumper to bumper?
That's the wheelbase, sir.
Okay.
Oh, no, I had six and a half feet as a minimum. That, I mean, that's why we went, uh, I mean, we have to go back. There's just, you know, that's where we have twenty-two feet when it comes to the SFR and R1 as we. We found that the typical, uh, F-150, um, or whatever in Sandy, you know, needs twenty-two feet to be not on the sidewalk, so. That's just, that's why we even made the change at that point, so.
Commissioner Mahal, uh, McLean Wenzel, is your, is that a new hand up?
Yeah, it's a new hand up. So I just have a question. If the appellant hadn't brought this before us, hadn't, hadn't come back. The staff had approved. The staff had approved it, it just would have happened, but. Am I understanding that because another developer is worried about parking, that now it's back in front of us? Is that what's happened?
Yes, that, and I, I would probably clarify that by not saying another developer. I would say a citizen.
Okay, another.
Who happens to be a developer nearby.
Who's worried about the parking, okay.
And who also had given testimony in the first public hearing which gave him the right to appeal.
Got it. Thank you.
I should, let me just add one clarity to that. He had, they had the right to appeal because. The request from Mr. Newberry was a type two, if you remembered. So it did go out for public notice and that's how, that's how the. Found out about the request.
Okay, well, I have been hearing. Fairly strong support, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just trying to get our discussion moving here. But fairly strong support to uphold staff's original. Decision and finding. And I, so I think a. A motion to that effect and we'll see, we'll see where it, where it goes. That would be. The, the staff's original findings and, and decision, which was allowing the. Correct me if I'm wrong, this, the eighteen point, eighteen-two on the one and seventeen.
No.
No.
No. All we have to do is come back if we're, that way is to follow option one, which is uphold the staff's original decision.
And leave it at that.
And leave it at that. So I'll make the motion that we approve was a two-one dash zero zero one AP. Three eight seven nine seven and three eight seven nine Creekside Loop Appeal. Following staff recommendation number one. Uphold the staff decision to prove a type one adjustment to the setbacks for both units of the decision per final order. Of file number twenty dash zero four nine, dated December thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Sorry.
Okay. Just a quick question for clarification to Chris. Would that actually, the motion be a motion to deny the appeal? Because that's what's before us?
Correct, that's what I was gonna clarify. The motion is to deny the appeal and affirm the staff decision to approve the application.
That's what you said, wasn't it, Commissioner Losowski?
Exactly right. Thank you for just punctuating that, Mr. Green.
Happy to help.
All right, looking for a second.
A second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner. McLean Wenzel. We'll take a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Carlton?
No.
Commissioner Losowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Hook?
Yes.
And Commissioner. Oh, Commissioner Mayton?
Mayton is a yes.
And Chairman Crosby?
Yes, so motion, motion carries. We're doing okay?
Let's roll.
All right. We will move right on to the next public hearing, our final public hearing, which we will open at eight fifty-three. This is file number two-one dash zero zero four. The Marins Viewpoint Tree Variance. Any abstentions from the planning commission? And while we're, while I'm going through this, Kelly, you can take down Commissioner Hook's raised hand unless we're supposed to do it ourselves. Okay. Any conflicts of interest to, for anybody? Nothing seen, any ex parte contact? Any challenges from the public here of the planning commission or any individual commissioner?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, if you. I will go, I'll say that stuff when we get to the next part. All right, again, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to rate, to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved. Or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record. Or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue. You will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Any party may request that the hearing be continued to a later date or that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval. With sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue. Precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Staff report. This is Emily again. Great.
Yep, and I will share my screen again. All right, so this one is a tree variance for the Marins Viewpoint subdivision. So this is located off of Bluff Road, just south of Olson Street there. And a little background, so the subdivision itself was approved with conditions, of course, in twenty seventeen. And the plat was just recorded this past February. The subdivision approval included a condition that the applicant shall submit an updated arborist report in tree inventory for staff review and approval. So the request in front, in front of you tonight is a tree variance request. The subject property is about one point four acres and requires retention of four trees. And the, the trees need to be eleven inches diameter, breast height or greater, healthy, likely to grow maturity and located to minimize the potential for a blowdown. The applicant and the project arborist have been working with staff to identify the four retention trees. We've been going back and forth quite a bit. But there are actually very few retention tree candidates on the property. Mostly due to the trees' conditions. Actually, don't believe there are any trees that were evaluated to be in good condition on this property. But there are a number that are in fair condition, which are still, still healthy. The tree species, there are some invasive or some nuisance species on the property. And then also the locations in relation to both the building footprints and the public improvements. So kind of the combination of those. The items makes it so that there aren't really that many candidates on the property to choose from. So the applicant is requesting a variance to section seventeen one oh two fifty. And is proposing to retain three trees and then plant two mitigation trees. The three trees that are proposed to be retained are tree number five oh six, which is an eighteen inch DBH big leaf maple in fair condition. Tree number five forty-two, a thirty-six inch DBH western red cedar in fair condition. And tree number five fifty-eight, a sixteen inch DBH pear in fair condition. So this shows the locations of those three trees. So again, the, the big leaf maple is located number five oh six in the upper left-hand corner. The western red cedar. Is, is in the middle there on lot three, and then the pear tree is number five fifty-eight in the kind of lower right. And this, you can see the, the other trees on the property, most of which are in the building footprints there. Staff to do a site visit on, beginning of March. And we did, we do agree that there are very few good candidates for retention on the property. A huge majority of the trees are absolutely covered in IV, not just a little IV, but like odd of IV growing up the tree into the canopy. We looked around the site for other potential retention tree candidates. We did find a few trees that aren't covered in IV and seem to, you know, look relatively healthy. But most of those that were free of the IV were located within the building footprint on lot three. I think a couple were also on lot two, but kind of right, right in the middle where the, the house would go. There was one other one that we'd gone back and forth with the property owner with a few times. That we thought could be a potential candidate. It's located on the lot with the existing house that's gonna be retained. So it won't be as heavily impacted by construction and it's already an existing tree there. But the property owner is concerned that it is too close to the house and poses a hazard. It is a pretty, a pretty large tree. Look about the map here. If you can see my mouse, it's this tree here, and there's actually like a shed or something right next to it. So, so the property owner doesn't think that would really be a great candidate to retain. We have, we do have some concerns about both the health and location of tree number five oh six, which was the big leaf maple that their, the applicant is proposing. As one of the three retention trees. The, the applicant had submitted an arborist reports from April of last year that evaluated that tree as being in poor condition. And then the more recent arborist report submitted with this application evaluated as being in fair condition. So we did have some questions about the condition of the tree. And then also some concerns about its location. It is located within the allowable building footprint on lot one. You know, clearly the house could kind of be moved within that footprint. It doesn't have to take up the whole building footprint. But it is within that allowable footprint, and it is also close to the proposed future sidewalks, which should be on Dreamcatcher and Olson. So we're not certain that it would be able to be adequately protected during construction based on that location. This is a picture of that tree, tree five oh six. It's, it's, you know, tall trees, so the left is the bottom and the right is the top. You can tell it's kind of leaning. I mean, actually is legitimately leaning. It's not just the, the photo. And you can see the IV kind of growing at the base and growing all up along the side and then into the canopy. So this picture is taken before the, things are starting to, spring has hit, I guess now. Things are starting to bud, leaves are starting to come out. This is actually taken at the beginning of March before that. So all this green you see is actually IV. It is not the tree. It's not the, it's not big leaf maple leaves or buds. It's IV. So that's, that's not a, a great sign. The IV can really constrict a, a tree. So we have some concerns about that. We also have some concerns about the pear tree being selected as a retention tree. It does meet the, the retention requirements, which again are to be healthy, likely to grow maturity. And not susceptible to wind. Blowdown and then also the size requirement of eleven inches DBH or greater. At least as evaluated by the, the project arborist, it meets those criteria. But if it were selected as a retention tree, it would be protected through a tree covenant deed that kind of runs with the property. As staff, we don't really think that meets the intent of the retention tree standards, which really prefers two, three, two-thirds of the retained trees to be conifer species. So essentially, if we did choose this as a retention tree, it would be protected in perpetuity by an actual document deed, a tree covenant that would run with the property. So our staff recommendation is to approve the variance to their retention standards. To require the applicant to retain tree five forty-two, which is the western red cedar. I keep that one as a retention tree, but instead of retaining tree five oh six and tree five fifty-eight, so that big leaf maple covered in IV and the pear tree. We're recommending mitigation trees for those trees as well as for the fourth required retention tree. So it'd be retaining one tree and then having six mitigation trees. But instead of planting the mitigation trees, which often just leads to code enforcement issues down the line. And, you know, the new homeowners frequently come in and remove the trees or don't water them and they die and it just becomes code enforcement. Issue. We are recommending that you require the applicant to just pay the mitigation tree fee, which is five hundred dollars per tree. So that would be a total of three thousand dollars instead of planting those mitigation trees on site. So that concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Any immediate questions from any commissioner of staff? Commissioner McLean Wenzel?
So if, if they pay the, the three thousand dollar mitigation for the mitigation trees, does that get put into trees? In the city limits? Where does that three thousand dollars go?
Yeah, we have a separate account actually specifically for that. And the intent is that, so the five hundred dollars is to cover the cost of, of buying the tree, going to pick it up at the nursery, planting it. Like all the, all that transportation and everything. And then also three, the first three years of watering, and it would get planted most likely on city-owned property within the same watershed. I don't, I don't know nearby, probably the nearest park is that bluff. I don't know what it's called actually, where the dog park is. Essentially something over there, although we'd have to also be in compliance with the master plan.
Sorry, I think I'm getting a little lag. Sorry, Emily, I didn't mean to cut you off. I, I was just gonna add that it's actually put into a. Reserve account that is separate from the general fund, so it, it doesn't ever just get folded in with the rest of like the taxes or fees or assessments. It's a, I forget the exact term. Somebody on here that's more into finance probably knows the term for it, but it's. It's basically like an escrow account in that, in the sense that it can only be used for one purpose.
Thank you.
I think it's called a liability account, I believe is what we call it, but I don't, I don't know the details. I just know it can't be touched for anything but trees.
Commissioner Carlton, I think, was next.
Emily, just a quick question. I'm just looking at the, the plat. It looks like there's a decent number of street trees. To be planted, is that correct?
Um, I, I don't have that pulled up, I don't think, but I, yes, I mean, street trees would be required.
I mean, it just looks like pretty, it literally looks like a pretty standard deal. But those street trees don't count as mitigation trees?
No, those are a separate code requirement in, in chapter seventeen ninety-two to provide street trees on, on any new street.
Okay, I don't know the order how. Of how hands went up, but I'm just gonna go across my screen to Commissioner Lee.
I might have misinterpreted what I read. I was thinking there was city property close to the location, but maybe you meant in the report. Some other city property wherever it may be.
For the mitigation trees to be planted?
Yes.
Yeah, there, I mean, we don't, I mean, there's not a specific one as of yet. But the, it would, the intent would be to plant those mitigation trees on city-owned property or some property we know would not be developed. That's gonna be to some degree. Within that same watershed, which, I mean, in Sandy is basically one. I guess we have two watersheds, mostly one.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Lee is correct. I think the staff report did allude to land. By this property. I think it's the John's viewpoint property, I believe. Just to the southeast. I think that was in the staff report, Emily.
Okay. Commissioner Mayton, you had a question?
I'm not so much a question, Chairman, just a, just a comment. I just wanted to thank the staff for educating me on trees with this report. It was quite an exercise for me to look at the plat layout of these homes and cross off the trees that might be usable. Myself, just so I can gain an understanding. And honestly, I just did not see any other way than what the staff recommended. So I wanted to say thank you to them. They did a great job in detailing it out for me and I would support their direction with, with this recommendation.
Okay, with that, we need to move to the applicant's presentation. Is the. Applicant in the room, Kelly?
I believe, hold on one second, let me lower Chris's hand. Or Commissioner Mayton's hand, sorry.
Shame on you.
I believe Mary Gersh or Gersh. Let me promote her, because she is the project arborist, so I'm anticipating she's gonna speak on behalf of the applicant, so let me promote Mary.
Okay, Mary, we're at the applicant presentation. We're assuming you're at, if you'd. Give us your name and address, the floor is yours. give us your name and address, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Yeah. My name is Mary Gersh. I'm a certified arborist. And I didn't realize I was speaking for the developer. I was just thinking I was here to answer any specific tree-related questions that he couldn't answer. So I don't have a presentation for you. I just thought you might have questions for me or John.
I don't.
Who is the developer.
Is John? So Mary, I, the only people I see in the attendees list at this point, there's only five people left. It's yourself, Darren with no last name identified, Jennifer Mayner, Kathleen Walker, who I know is not the applicant. And one five oh three seven eight nine five three five nine. So I'm not sure if that's the applicant, but I have no way of knowing.
Um, I was gonna look up his contact information and see if that's his number.
Well, we just, if we just say if the applicants in the room, raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Hit the raise hand icon. If you're on the telephone, do star nine. So stand up and make yourself known.
Yeah, the, in this case, typically how it works, just so everybody knows, is once I set up the Zoom meeting and launched the agenda, I asked for the applicant. So in the previous case, I asked for Mr. Newberry if he was gonna present and he said yes. And I asked the appellant and she said yes. In this case, I never heard back from anybody from the applicant. Unless I'd missed it in my email box, but, so I never sent a panelist invite because nobody responded to the request to be a panelist.
All right. I can confirm that that five three five nine is John Mahaffey, the developer. So it's him.
Okay, I will allow him to speak and then if you can just stay on Mary and you can both speak on behalf of the applicant.
Sure, thank you.
So I promoted John to a panelist. He's gonna have to unmute himself on his phone.
And I have no idea how to tell you to do that, John.
I can ask him to unmute. Here, I'll ask him. It prompts him on his phone.
I know it's star six on some of mine, but I don't think that's Zoom.
Yeah, that's all I can do though. I can't make somebody unmute. I don't have the power to do that.
Well, it looks like a cell number to me because I have several that have that seven eight nine and that's just kind of mute, unmute on your cell phone.
I have texted him and told him to unmute himself. I don't know. That will help.
I mean, in the presence of time, could we just have Mary present anything she has? We go through testimony and then you'll have a chance to rebuttal. So John can figure it out by then. You'll have a chance to speak again.
That works for me.
Okay, I can tell you, I initially saw the trees in twenty eighteen and there was a question about the condition of the big leaf maple number five oh six. It depends on the conditions at the time. You're looking up into a canopy that is full of IV and the tree has grown in three years. It may have outcompeted the IV. It may have had more exposure to the sun from other trees failing around. So it did get more resources. So it grew. It could have been just a borderline thing that it was, you know, more leaning on the poor than the fair. It's a subjective kind of rating. When I went back to the site, I think in February, I looked at that tree and I said, it's not, it's not as poor of condition as I used to rate it. So yes, I did consider it fair. As far as leaning, it is right next to a sweet cherry. If you look on there, there's another tree right up against it on the site map. So it's what I would consider leaning towards light, a natural kind of leaning, a self-correcting lean. So I don't believe it is leaning because it is failing. It is going to have impacts there. It's not a perfect, great candidate for retention. And I agree with the staff that, you know, maybe, you know, just mitigating for that tree would be better. I kind of agree with five fifty-eight, the pear tree. It can be preserved. It's not in the way of any construction, but is it a long-term species tree? Not really. So it's not one that you're gonna expect. It's not a native tree that you're gonna see live a hundred, two hundred years. It's got maybe forty years, you know, and it's not gonna look that great. So I don't have any problem. I'm not saying, oh my gosh, you have to save that pear. The Western red cedar there is a good candidate for preservation because if you look, there's not a lot of trees directly around it. Where on lot two, where they discussed in the report, five twenty-five is, you know, in pretty good condition. You can see how close it is to all those other trees. So when they're close like that, they kind of act together against the forces of the wind. So if you remove everything else and just let it stand by itself, it doesn't have the structural ability to defend itself from the wind all by itself when it is used to acting in a group and fighting the wind in this group. And that tree, thinking it's like a twenty-eight inch big leaf maple or something. It would need a root protection zone twenty feet into that lot. So it's almost already in where the footprint would be. You'd, you'd almost make, you know, that lot unbuildable if you save that one. The other one they had mentioned was that five thirty-nine tree, which is a grand fir that's on lot four where the existing house is. There wouldn't be very many impacts. There would only be impacts on the west side. But you'd still, even if you did the minimum kind of root protection zone, you're gonna need at least twenty-one, twenty-two feet to the west. And if you're preserving that five forty-two, you already can't use the back of your lot. And then you can't use almost fifteen feet on your east side of your lot. It, it really makes it difficult. With that five forty-nine, I had talked to the developer about it. And I said, you could potentially preserve that tree. One of the things you can do is you can have the project arborist on site during any excavation. So if they run into roots, they can be, it can be determined whether or not it's safe to cut that root and they can be cut cleanly, which allows the tree, tree to compartmentalize those wounds better. But even if you had the project arborist on site, it would still potentially be a tree that would rate as a moderate risk for tree failure. And if you look at the tree risk assessment model, there's low, moderate, high and severe. So even though it's moderate, that's on the lower end. Moderate for the likelihood of failure, the impacts of, you know, the failure. If you cut the roots on the west side, it's likely gonna fall to the east where that house is. But even if it fell the other way, it would fall in the new house. So when you talk about tree risk, I can only categorize, categorize the risk and I, if I say it's moderate, so the second step on a four-step scale. But I'm not living next to the tree. The property owners are the ones that decide if it's an acceptable risk or the city. I can just classify the risk. So when I talked to the developer about that tree and they said they were very concerned and I agreed that there was a moderate level of risk with retaining that because of root loss. They said that they, they would prefer not to take on that risk. They didn't want to save that tree and have that risk. So that's why that tree wasn't included on, as a, as a candidate for preservation. And I think those are the things that you mentioned in your report, the staff report concerns, but I may have missed some.
Mary, can you, can you please give us your mailing address?
Sure. It is one six zero five zero southwest Waxwing. It's like a bird or something. It's W A X W I N G. Way. And it's Beaverton nine seven oh oh seven. Although every time I drive to Sandy, I say, why don't I live in Sandy? It's so beautiful out there in Sandy.
Thank you.
Sure.
We just need the mailing address for when we issue the decision to mail it to you.
Perfection.
All right. I'm gonna move us on to test the public testimony. And again, as we said before, we'll do it in three parts. First, those that are in favor and then those who are not in favor and finally any neutral testimony. If you are participating online and on Zoom and wish to speak, click the raise hand button and wait for Kelly to recognize you. And if you're on the telephone, you dial star nine to raise your hand and then wait to be recognized there. And as for everybody else, when you do speak, we ask that you give us your name and your mailing address for the record. So we will begin with testimony in favor of the proposal.
I have a Jennifer Manor with her hand raised.
Okay, Jennifer, go ahead.
Oh. I failed to promote them to a panelist. Hold on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Hi. Okay. Thank you for letting me join tonight. I am Jennifer Manor. I live across the street and my address is three seven seven eight seven Olson Street. And while I was, I'm, I'm in favor of the, the proposed variance for keeping the trees, but I didn't realize what the city had come back at. The information that I received didn't give me what the city had come back at and I, I guess my concern and why I just wanted to say something is having lived next door or across the street for the last four years, I've seen the condition of the trees in windstorms and the idea of keeping them is scary. We've, I mean, we've seen vehicles crushed. We've seen limbs come down multiple times a month and the idea of reading the report with the hazardous trees and the poor condition of the trees. I, I love what the city, I think, has offered with the, the mitigation. I'm just a favor of removing as many as we can. So I don't know how well that came out, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for sharing.
This takes a second. I'm gonna have to un-promote her. Remove permission. Okay. Lower hand. Okay. I do not see anybody else with their hands raised for this portion.
All right. We will move on to proponent testimony. If you are not in favor of the application, then this is your opportunity to speak. Please give us your name and your mailing address once Kelly recognizes you.
So this is her opponent testimony?
Yes. Yes, I don't know what I said, but.
You said proponent. That's okay.
Oh, okay.
I have a hand raised for Kathleen Walker. I'm gonna allow her to speak.
Okay. Go ahead, Kathleen. Kathleen, you have the floor.
Sorry, could you hear me?
Yes, we do now.
I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I just had one change. So Kathleen Walker, one five nine two zero, Southeast Bluff Road. I live about eight hundred feet from this proposed subdivision and I'm very familiar with the, the forested area over there. And the air, those, that, that stand of trees has been there for the thirty-four years that I've lived in the neighborhood. And it gets buffeted by those east winds that we get on the bluff big time. So everything that's up there is, has been there for a long time and is fairly wind firm. I'm a certified forester and also certified hazard tree inspector. I haven't looked at all these trees individually. The only change that I would ask that you consider making is that tree, first of all, I am concerned that, you know, there's over forty trees there and it's a little disappointing that, you know, over twenty of the trees are Douglas fir trees. And they're not, and, and some cedar trees and it's, it's kind of a little bit disappointing to see that, you know, when there's over forty trees that are bigger than a foot, you know, eleven inches, that we could not find, you know, three or four cedars or reds or cedars or Doug fir to, to kind of save out of that. I get the fact that, you know, there's houses to be put down there and, and the trees are in the way. But to some extent, it's also helpful to kind of approach a site design with the intent of saving some trees too. And that doesn't appear to have happened so much here. It's kind of more like they're in the way they gotta go, which I can understand, but it's just a little bit disappointing. These, the one tree that I guess I would ask to reconsider is tree number five thirty-nine. It's on the existing lot. It's a grand fir. It, it appears to have plenty of room for the tree protection requirements, especially since it's already on an existing lot that's not going to be disturbed. So at a minimum, I guess I would ask that you consider protecting five thirty-nine. The other thing I would add is that, you know, the, the reports talked about the presence of, of English ivy on the trees. And certainly over time, that can definitely.
I feel like I have to whisper so they don't hear me.
That certainly the English ivy is a, an, an issue, but it's not a permanent. You know, if, if you deal with the English ivy and cut it at the root and deal with it, it will die back and, and the tree can definitely respond to that. And if you keep the ivy from climbing up in the trees, it, it can, you know, kind of maintain the health of the tree. So, you know, that's not a real deal killer there when you do have English ivy, if you do manage the situation. So yeah, just my one comment is try to protect tree, at least five thirty-nine. It's one, it's one more tree. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other opponent testimony?
Do you see that? Not, not currently. I do see Commissioner Maiton has his hand raised. I don't know if he means to have it raised or.
I have a question if I'm able to. For staff.
Okay, we'll be, we'll be there when we get through the testimony. Do you see any other hands for this one, Kelly?
No, I think you can go to neutral.
Okay, we'll go to neutral testimony if you're neither in favor or opposed, but have a comment. Now is your opportunity. Please give us your name and your mailing address. And Kelly will recognize you.
You think after a year of Zoom, I'd be a little bit better at it? I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, then we'll go back to Emily for a recap.
All right. I don't have much to add. It, it sounds like staff and the applicant, or at least on the, the same page with this. I appreciated the additional information from Mary about some of the, the trees. Yeah, and I mean, I, I agree with Kathleen, like we, we really did want to try and consider tree five thirty-nine, that one on the existing lot. But I think as Mary pointed out, it is true that it would, it would be the roots on the west side that would probably get impacted the most. And then if that's making the tree more susceptible to fall towards the east, especially with those winds, that probably would not be a, a great option. Another thing to point out is this subdivision was actually approved prior to the planning commission interpretation that we, we could not apply that one specific subsection of the landscaping chapter to subdivisions specifically. So we were applying that and that does require the tree fencing at five feet beyond drip line, which actually makes it a little bit bigger than what we're requiring now, which is the, the critical root zone. And so any of these trees that are retained would actually have to reflect that approved tree fencing from that subdivision to remain in compliance with the subdivision approval. So that would, that would actually make retaining tree five thirty-nine a little more complicated in terms of allowing a buildable footprint on that lot free there because it would encroach a little bit further into that lot. I'm actually not really sure either why this was platted before all the tree retention was, was finalized. But I don't know if Kelly can speak to that more. Typically, that's not really how we do it, but, but it was. And so you know, we're, we're kind of left with the, the trees that are on the site. Eight and their locations and, and all of that. And they're just really. Eight and their locations and all of that. They're just really, did not seem to be in this case that many. And you know, tree five forty-two, we are lucky, as Mary pointed out, it's not really located close to other trees. And so if the trees are removed, if all the rest of the trees on the site are removed, or even if, you know, most of them, other than the three they chose are removed, it should be not as badly impacted by, by wind since it is sort of on its own more so than others as it is now.
Yeah, one day, one thing I will add is that I agree with Ms. Walker that it would be nice to save more Doug firs and cedars. And we've tried to do that. Staff has brought code changes in the past and we've been told by past city councilors to look into it more and you know, work with the developers on a more creative solution. The problem with that is what we're seeing around town is a lot of densities that are being built to max density. And if you're a developer or if you want to see maximum amount of lots being utilized, that's a great thing. However, that does come at the cost of tree removal. So there's definitely going to be, as we, as we all know, a need to look at the tree code again. But in saying that, I think, I think there is a real need if people do want to see more tree retention, you gotta give staff some more ability to require more tree retention then. Because what, right now, what happens like on a site like this is somebody comes in, they want to masquerade the whole site, basically level it. And what that does is it damages all the trees, all the tree root protection areas, all the CRZs, compacts the soils and what we're left with is three or four trees, or in this case, maybe one, if you go with the staff recommendation tonight. And, you know, we've been given very little direction in the past to do anything but that. So I, while I don't disagree that it would be nice to save more big trees, we need clear and objective standards within the code that directs us in a way that we can do that. Right now, staff doesn't really have that ability unless, unless the developer just wants to do it as part of their proposal. But otherwise, it makes it very difficult because we do have to allow buildable lot areas and we can't, you know, shrink the buildable lot areas down to such a size that it would potentially be considered like a taking. So that's all I want to explain is that, you know, I do agree that it would be nice to save some bigger trees. But right now, we're pretty limited with how we can do that.
Okay.
Staff, I see some hands up. I think there's applicant rebuttal though.
Yeah, I will, I see the commissioner hands up, but I'm want to move to the applicant rebuttal. If they, if they have any comments before we, we go to our questions. So applicant, either Mary or John, if you, this would be your opportunity for rebuttal. Or at least one of you come on and tell us whether you're going to rebut or not.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry. I wanted to mention that John Haffey did text me and say he's tried everything to get on here and he is failing. But it's not that he doesn't want to, he just can't make it work. He also said he still wants to reiterate that he's very concerned about potential for retaining that five thirty-nine tree. The, the risk is too high and he's concerned about it. So he definitely wants, you know, doesn't want that considered. And just he wants to say sorry that he couldn't speak. He couldn't get on.
Thank you. Now you can mute Mary if you want. All right, well, we'll, we'll keep it open for a little bit. I want to get to the two raised hands that I see. And again, I'll just start in my upper left-hand corner, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I was going to say that I agree with the arborist in relation to the health of the trees. She spent a lot of time on the property as well as staff, so I would prefer to go with the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McLean-Wenzel.
I guess I, my, I have a question and I'm not sure if it's to Emily or to Kelly. But what is it that, that staff needs? So we say we're a tree city and we say that we, we have these retention trees we want to keep. And then we get a proposal where all the trees are Xed out on, on the lots. And we say, well, to make it a buildable lot, you need to take these trees out. So, I mean, I thought the whole idea of saying you have to retain trees meant that to build it out, you'd have to be, you'd have to work around that. So I guess I'm confused. If somebody could shed some
I mean, I can handle, I mean, Emily can talk more to the ecology of the tree and I'm just not an expert in that regard. She's much more so than me, but what I can tell you is that when we see these development proposals, everybody's trying to maximize densities, as you all are aware of. Even to the fact of trying to propose zone changes and PDs and everything else that's been discussed recently. And traditionally speaking, in the ten years I've been here, and maybe this is changing a little bit, but there hasn't been a lot of support for when staff says no to that. And there's no, there's no clear and direct way in the code that, you know, if they propose the minimum tree retention and those trees are just barely meeting the requirements, there's no way for us to say, oh yeah, we really want that forty-inch Doug fir or that group of Doug firs in this area. There's really no way that we've ever found that we can do that. And then when we have had a lot of applicants that propose mitigation trees and variances, I'll just be very frank, those have been supported by planning commission and council. So there, there hasn't been a lot of, there's, hasn't been a lot of support in trying to save a lot of big tree groupings. Now, if that's a direction that council or the planning commission would like to change, it's really starts with the leadership in the community and giving staff kind of more tools or, you know, both a carrot and a stick, I would say. So, but it does start with a willingness for want to say, to save more trees. And so far, my ten years here, that really hasn't been a priority, except within the FSH and hillside areas. But that, that's not saying that that couldn't change in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hook, I think you were next.
My question is for the arborist about the Ivy on tree number five zero six. Is there a way to remedy that situation so that the Ivy would not kill the tree and make it become a hazard later?
Okay, fortunately, we still have the public hearing open, so Mary, you may answer that question and that question alone right now.
I'm sure with the Ivy, there's kind of two steps or two ways. The Ivies, the roots are in the ground, so they're growing up the tree. So if you cut the Ivy so that it is separated from its roots, then it will die. So then it can no longer outcompete the natural canopy and the foliage for sunlight. But the dead Ivy will remain on the tree. And it's in the ideal circumstances, you would remove that and that you would have people take ladders or landscaping people and cut that out of the tree because like in an ice storm, ice will still go on that dead, those dead Ivy leaves and create weight and wind. I'm not saying that right. You know, it'll, it'll make the tree more risky being on there. So yes, you can kill the Ivy and then you can have it removed by a landscaper and it won't fall out by itself. I don't know if that answers the question. It's best to remove it, but it has to be done in several steps. And, and especially when it's so far up the canopy, it has probably done by a landscape professional that climbs trees or in a bucket or something like that. Not me. I don't climb trees.
Thank you. That answers the question. And then there's a follow-up question. Then for staff, would we be able to make that a condition of having them kill the Ivy and remove it?
Yes.
And then have re-verification from the arborist?
Yeah, they're asking for a variance, so we would be able to attach that as a condition.
Okay, Commissioner Carlton, I think, I believe you're next.
Yeah, just a couple thoughts. I've just written a few things down here and trying to just talk maybe just once. Like, you know, you know, I am a forester, got a degree in forestry and so a lot of it was wildland fire, so. And I've expressed, I know Kelly has, I appreciated his, I guess, support of some of my comments and we have some of these in the past. The problem is we, you know, trees can be hundred, two hundred, three hundred years old. And we're all very short in relation to that. So we get into this preservationist mode and that just frequently doesn't work. Because as been said very well by Kelly this evening, developer has a right to develop the land. Now, you can see, I think this is actually a good example. Yeah, you see all those Xs that are on there. A whole bunch of those Xs are on there because they're inside of a building envelope. And then we also have to protect the, the roots. And so you kind of go through all of that. And, you know, what you're really saying is if you were to keep all the trees, you would, you wouldn't be able to develop to the least, let's do it to its full potential. I mean, this is why the developers want their input and this is, you're gonna go on with this forever. And remember, we're gonna redo the code two years ago, so I'm picking to the choir here. So, you know, my proposal was, you know, if you want trees, you start growing them now. And they will become big at some point in time. If you can find one that's a big one to save or whatever, but, you know, for them, you know where I live over in, over in Scenic Meadows, if you drive into our area, you see these nice tree-lined streets. That's why I ask about the street trees. Just count the street trees. Sure, they're small now. Come back in twenty years. You know, you generate the neighborhood. So I think there's a mindset that you need to consider, which is to get to a goal, do you just try and preserve what's kind of there? Or do you recognize that what's there will change and then put something in place to replace it that's going to work around where the, the houses are going to be? And so if you're willing to, to, you know, put in decent street trees and take care of them, let them grow, come back in twenty years. Yeah, you go, you say, hey, that's wonderful. You know, that's great. But, you know, we're in Western Oregon here where Douglas fir, you know, you know, grows. And, you know, we grow trees better than, even the South thinks are pretty good. We grow them better than anybody else out here. So it's just a fact of, of life. And it's, I think, as soon as somebody, a committee or whoever can just come to grips with that and come up with a strategy, and that's all I'm proposing is a strategy, to try and get to where you want to go. So I, I think that adequate street trees, and if you can serve something and though that's fine, but I'm more concerned to see really neat street trees placed in here while taken care of because I know they're going to grow. And you're going to come back and you're going to have, you know, Sandy, you're going to have Street Tree USA. It's just gonna, gonna be the same trees that are there now, if that makes sense. So I'm, I'm in favor of granting the, the variants. And we spent all night deciding if one or two trees can stay. I'm not sure how much that's worth it.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Losowski.
Yeah, a couple comments, more or less. Well, first of all, I think on my property, I have more trees than anybody, except maybe Hall, excuse me, Commissioner McLean-Wenzel. So I love trees and whenever I come back, I think I'm maybe misinterpreted as not being a tree lover. I am. But I'd like to, I'm not sure of sitting around for forty-five minutes discussing individual trees is what really I signed up for. What makes the best use for us. I think that going back and getting the code revisions that Commissioner Carlton was looking for, at least something a little more than we have today would be advantageous. And I'd like to point out that I think that if we could get the, instead of if you're a developer, instead of having a tree being something bad to have because it keeps you from building us, why don't we look at paying them for retaining those trees or getting some type of credit back? So they have the economic incentive to go after and keep the trees as opposed to this push and pull that we have now. And/or in addition to that, come back and have them really unbelievable replanting program. We come back to where down on the street trees, but maybe alongside yards, et cetera. Because again, trying to save the trees and, and then put in seventy-five hundred or so square foot lots, it just doesn't work. So again, sorry for the editorial, but we've been, we've been over this for I don't know how many years. I think it's time to make some forward movement. So the developers aren't, aren't bad people. I don't think they're out there to make an honest living and provide more housing that we're looking for. So let's look at giving them some options of, so it's advantageous for them to keep the trees. I think we could get out of, out of this. I'm all for letting Emily, excuse me, Emily working with the applicant to come up with the best solution that's there. She knows more than I ever will, or I think any of us, about the trees here. So I go along with the staff recommendation on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I'll just be very short. I was on the council for two and a half years. There was supposed to be a tree committee. It was set up about the time I was starting there. Nothing has been accomplished on that. I think we need to get the mayor or the city council to get back on putting that together with staff so that we have less of these kind of problems. But the other thing I was going to mention that in Bend, we have, when I was over there, we had a lot of large trees and one of the ways it was dealt with was doing cluster housing to save more trees by clustering the homes together in a different manner. Thanks.
Before I forget, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, we'll move, we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Carlton. It's the second or raise your hand. I didn't catch, okay, by Commissioner Maite. To close the public hearing at nine forty-six, all in favor with a thumbs up, wave. Wink your eyes to show us you're still awake. All right. Thanks. Okay, any further discussion? One, I, I agree with a lot, everything, or probably everything that's been said. One thing that has came to my mind or a thought when I was getting ready for this was as long as, as long as our land use laws are making us put more and more people on less and less space, trees are gonna, and this is maybe an intentional pun, but trees are gonna take the fall. You know, it's just, I think that's kind of summarized what some of you have said. You know, it's, it's just, we're not happy with that, but the way it is right now. Any further discussion before we entertain a motion? I'm, I'm gathering that the motion would be to approve based on the findings of facts and staff's recommendation. This would be the time when somebody would speak.
I'm being nice and raising my hand.
Okay, okay. They stay up there, so go ahead, Commissioner Carlton.
Oh, yeah, I know. That's very unusual for me to do that. I will make a motion that we approve application twenty-one dash zero zero four tree variance, burn view, the tree variance with the recommendations and conditions of approval as outlined by staff and the staff report.
I'll second that.
It moved by Commissioner Carlton, seconded by Commissioner Losowski to approve file twenty-one dash zero zero four. We will move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Carlton?
Yes.
Commissioner Losowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean-Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Hook?
Yes.
Commissioner Maite?
Maite is, yes.
And Chairman Crosby?
Yes, motion carries. Well, ladies and gentlemen, with no further ado, that ends our agenda for the evening.
I make a motion that we retire for the evening. We adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, thumbs up, wave, say hello, say goodnight. Goodnight, Chet, goodnight, David. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, thank you, Emily.
I think Emily should have most of the heavy lifting on this meeting.
Yep.
Thank you, Emily.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep, we'll see ya.